Please stand, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Before I turn it over for recognitions, I just want to acknowledge, thank everyone for coming. A little early, we have, because of scheduling, we have two meetings tonight. So we're starting with our June action meeting, and then which will be followed after we adjourn by our work session for the July meeting. And one of our recognitions may be a little delayed, but we will improvise if we need to. So with that, I'll turn it over to who is leading on the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll take that. So this evening, we're excited about recognized one of our Hudson School District staff members. Tonight, Mary Claire Olson Potter from the Chamber is here to tell us a little bit about this recognition.
As Tracy said, I'm Mary Claire Olson Potter, President of the Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And first of all, I want to thank you all for your continued leadership and hard work, ensuring that all the Hudson students have an excellent education experience as we prepare them for their next steps in their life. So thank you for that. Each month, as Tracy said, we recognize a brand champion through the Chamber. And the qualities of a brand champion include passionate and supportive, knowledgeable and communicative, invested in success, and interested in building loyalty. So as Tracy said, we were so excited to recognize Elizabeth Betsy Gantz as the Hudson Brand Champion for May. So Betsy, thank you for coming forward. Betsy plays an instrumental role in the planning and coordination of our annual Hudson Community Expo. And thanks to the superintendent, we've been having it up there for the past three years. At Hudson High School, she joins the planning calls. She serves as a liaison between the Hudson Chamber and the high school, ensuring that we have all the necessary tools and staff to have a successful event. In addition, Betsy works with all the custodians to make sure that we are ready and set to go for the event. And then they also help do all the cleanup following that. And I'd like to recognize that team that worked on that this year. Zach Erickson, Shane McGee, Mike Kleinbrook, Marcella Fan Sanflippo, Amanda Weishar, Sean Hagan, and Monica Milligan. We could not do this event with all of their hard work and dedication. Betsy puts in a great deal of time, energy, and effort to make sure the event dates work equally well for the Chamber and the high school. She ensures that the Chamber is assisted throughout the event. And whatever we need, Betsy delivers, and we can always count on her. Plus, she's just really nice and really fun to work with. So, thank you, Betsy, for all that you have done and continue to do for this community. And all brand champions receive a $25 Chamber check that they can spend and use at a store or restaurant of their location. So we look forward to, we're already planning for next year. If you want to put it on your calendar, it'll be May 5th. But until then, please join me in recognizing Betsy.
Thank you for your efforts and thank you for making us proud, all right? We have another recognition.
Yes. The next two recognitions are part of our strategic vision. The Hudson School District has established three pillars of focus: our students, our staff, and our community. Tonight's appreciation of service recognizes community members who contribute to the school's, the school district's vision and mission. So I'll invite Sue Homers up first.
Good evening. This award goes to Lana Schoburg on behalf of the Willow River Elementary School. Lana is, I don't know if she's an employee, but she is very involved at the PIPs Center. And in fact, is there this evening at an event, so was unable to join us tonight. Lana is an alumni parent to Willow and has recently renewed her connections to Willow River Elementary. She approached me about a year ago to partner with the PIPs to participate in a migration celebration in May of '22, to celebrate the return of the migratory birds that go from Costa Rica to Hudson and back and forth. I agreed, but I had no idea what the level of involvement that Lana would provide and the high levels of student hands-on learning and creative expression that would come out of this. She told me that the fourth graders were going to make birds. Sounded easy enough, I thought. By the end, the entire school was involved in creating a Costa Rica rainforest habitat on display at the PIPs. Lana met with our fourth graders and shared articles on every bird so that students could research their bird, and then spent several hours helping these students make life-size replicas of the birds they chose. Lana created, or incorporated, no, collaborated with her art teacher to design a rainforest habitat that would be built at the PIPs, incorporating insects, birds, plants, and flowers created by each grade level. Lana's goal was to include every student and not to add any work to the teachers, and she single-handedly accomplished that. Willow eagerly participated again this year in a collaborative project that made each student feel like a real artist. In the words of one of the fourth grade teachers, "Lana works hard in the run-up to our birds project. She constructs templates for the students, collects cardboard, puts together binders, and gathers needed materials like pastel crayons and scissors. She has put together a presentation to ground the kids in the reality of what we are doing, complete with maps and pictures she herself has taken. She is great with the kids, always smiling. She works hard in the interim to put together the rainforest. And on the day of, she starts early to make the migration path from Willow to the PIPs, complete with flags and passports, so the students literally migrate their birds and walk down to their new habitat at the PIPs. She was kind, patient, and enthusiastic with the students throughout the process, making it memorable for everyone. She takes time to get to know the students she's working with, and she makes connections with them. Throughout this project, she was, was great at getting everyone involved, even beyond our fourth graders, from grade levels creating intricate parts of the rainforest, like ants and frogs, to the community involvement in the creation of the waterfall at our music and art show. Lana's passion for art is contagious, and for many, this has been one of the highlights of their year. Her enormous contributions of time, energy, and organization made this experience enjoyable for everyone and made everyone feel like they were part of something big on the opening night at the PIPs in May. Through her donation of time and talent, she inspired every student to work hard, to be creative, and to try something new. Willow has a deep appreciation for Lana's partnership, and we are grateful for the gifts that she has given us."
All right.
Next up is Fafani and Julie.
All right, good evening. I'm Julie Johnson, school social worker at the high school. And I'm happy to be here to share information about the Youth Resource Committee and recognize two exceptional volunteers that support the program. We know that students who are prepared for school do better in school academically and behaviorally. In addition, a major roadblock that has been identified in the community is the lack of public transportation. The Youth Resource Committee helps with both of these and more. It plays a critical role in meeting the needs of youth so the students are ready to thrive and learn. What is the Youth Resource Committee? It began in 2014 to target unique unmet needs of youth. It is a group of volunteers from a variety of organizations, such as First Presbyterian Church, the Hudson YMCA, Youth Action Hudson, United Way St. Croix Valley, Hudson Backpack Program, and the Raider Network. Over the 2022 school year, the Youth Resource Committee was very busy. Here are some of the contributions. In terms of transportation, they assisted with six sessions of driver's education for Hudson High School students, in particular, behind the wheel. They donated $15, $25 gas gift cards to Hudson School social workers to give to students and families. They supported Hudson student families with over $1,500 in taxi vouchers and bought a bike helmet and lock for two additional students. Other gift cards donated to Hudson School District include goodwill cards, Great Clips, and Albee cards. They assisted crowning achievements with their hygiene drive for Thug Life, donated $200 for hygiene products. They participated in Operation Helps Christmas campaign, supplying two Hudson children with Christmas gifts. They held the annual Knit a Difference. It was Back Stronger Than Ever hosting the Cast Down Party this past September with 30 participants and had a year-end total of over 1,000 donated items to various organizations, including Hudson Schools. Funds were raised to support a scholarship given to a Hudson High School senior. New this spring was a college apartment drive for seniors in need with items for free, for free, that they could choose to help with after-graduation plans. Here are a couple of quotes from the students. "I appreciate the help with the taxi vouchers because when my mom didn't have a car or one that works, I'd get a taxi voucher to get home." "Drivers had helped me learn the rules of the road. It is too expensive, so it was one less thing to worry about. Everything you did for us was very helpful and for my family as well." Last but not least, I want to thank the generous donors, which are too many to name at this time, and the two amazing volunteers that are here tonight, Cassie McGuire and Jeannie Schmidt. And I know Ally Soder is up there, but she's not able to join us this evening. So here are just some of the many things that these two do with their time and talent. They actively participate and run the committee meetings. They brainstorm new ideas and sustain current practices. They set up a 501(c)(3) and help fundraise and apply for grants for the many contributions to Hudson School District. And lastly, they coordinate with Hudson School District to best meet the needs of students and families. They are truly making a difference, and I couldn't imagine collaborating with any better volunteers and organization. Thank you. So I'd like to end sharing a letter from a Youth Resource Committee scholarship recipient. Dear Youth Resource Committee, thank you so much for choosing me to be the recipient of your scholarship. We had a Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to write you all a thank you. It means so much to me that you all decided to give me this generous scholarship and will use it to help further my education and so I can study neurology. I was diagnosed with Tourette's Syndrome when I was eight. I have also worked with students with disabilities since kindergarten, and I have learned a lot about my own disability and about autism. I want to study neurology so I can study both autism and Tourette's Syndrome and find out new and better treatments for both. Because of the scholarship, I am more sure and confident that I am on the right path and other people are willing to help and support me in anything I want to do. Once again, thank you so much." So again. For Hudson McGuire, she kind of chairs the committee. And then Jeannie Schmidt is actively involved with anyone else. Thank you.
Again, we appreciate the service of all of the people we recognized tonight. We hope that now you got these awards, you don't stop contributing, right? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. I guess, is there any request to speak on non-action items?
No.
All right. No public comments. And I'd offer Erin to start, if you think you have enough people here. Otherwise, we could start with our annual reports and then hit you at 6:00, 6:00 PM. All right, very good. Let's go with that. Dustin, you're up. If I were you guys, I'd, yeah, I'd want to be first, too, so, yeah.
So I guess I didn't realize Erin was in charge here, but congrats, Dr. Moen. All right, I won't rob too much of your time tonight, but we have numerous highlights for our department. Kind of wanted to cover the top ones for the year. So starting off, we partnered with some new local vendors this year for arborist services, water damage, cleanup, and automotive parts and repairs. We provided continuing education, forklift training for the staff. We collaborated, collaborated with CISA 10 this year to implement updated safety plans and conduct our annual safety training, which was this morning. We completed in-house summer projects during the high school roof replacement, ensuring a safe area for, well, I should say during Willow's, North Hudson, and high school, ensuring a safe area for all staff and students. Some of our big ADA wins for the year. We converted two high school single-stall, single-stall staff restrooms. Say that five times fast. Into fully automated doors with ADA-compliant structures for students' needs. We installed an ADA lift in the high school orchestra pit, and we added ADA soap dispensers to multi-stall public restrooms in the high school. We worked with the elementary school's physical education department to design and build a mini golf unit. We provided excellent service for community events, such as the Daddy Daughter Dance, the Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Expo, the Hot Air Fair, Hudson Quilt Show, the North Hudson Pepperfest, as well as numerous athletic and performing arts events. We successfully completed the install of the North Hudson Elementary Playground, which included new ADA-compliant equipment despite numerous challenges. We implemented routine daily door checks by custodial staff to ensure building safety and security. We completed all necessary requirements to close out orders issued after the safety inspection conducted on March 28th by the Department of Safety and Professional Services. We received our certificate of completion for our compliance. We introduced a new weekly turf maintenance program to enhance the safety and prolong the useful life of the high school athletic fields. We collaborated with both the high school medals class and the woods class to complete numerous projects. Some in-house promotions, custodians moving to lead and head positions, filling vacant roles. Along those lines, we distribute custodial 101 booklets to all staff serving as a resource for new and experienced employees. We implemented safe and intentional use protocols for our heavy operating equipment, resulting in reduced maintenance costs. And then lastly, just continued our partnership with both the fire department and the city to ensure compliance in all of our projects.
Any questions from board members? All right, thank you for your work. Go ahead.
Just had a question about the ADA lift for the orchestra pit.
That was very exciting.
Something I never thought of, but I'm sure, does that really cramp the space with, or? I'm just curious.
So, short version of the history. It was designed with a very small hoistway access space. Prior to my arrival, I guess the lift kind of went back and forth between the manufacturers. So we finally got the correct one and got it installed. So the space was available. You can't see it when the stage is in place, but it's, it's under there.
Excellent.
All right. Again, thank you for your report. Appreciate your brevity. All right, thank you. All right. High school, middle school, are you ready? All right, Erin's ready? All right, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I guess, I guess I turned into a creature of habit with the 6:00 PM start time, so. Thanks to Riley White, who's checking in on, making sure she can be here on time and get to her next event as summer, summer's taking off. And I glanced to look at the, the agenda, it said 5:30. So three girls already here, just like that, within 10 minutes of the email. So appreciate the support, not only from the fall and the winter, but now another successful season in our spring. As you can see, as you work through the slides, a ton of great accomplishments, achievements, not only individually, but importantly, team and representing our community. Few of the sports aren't able to make it today. As you are all, have kids in the high school ages, they start going crazy. The first day summer hits, everybody starts heading different directions. So trying to get groups coordinated can be a challenge. But we do have representatives from girls soccer, softball, and hopefully track and field here if they're on time. They were told to be here at 5:50 anyways, so it'd be a good test. I can speak to that first slide. So our top senior GPA is always a great slide up there, not only for an accomplishment, lots of seniors participating, so there's, there's competition for that top senior GPA. But it also shows high achievement in their respective sport, but also in the classroom. Lots of all-state honors in terms of all-state academics are still yet to be released. But we'll have many students in the running for that across the state as well. It's just awesome to see, but a great reminder to make sure we address that piece, too. We had our third annual senior recognition. That's turned into a really cool event. If you hadn't had a chance to make it to that event, we invite all continuing athletes who are going to be competing at the next level. We established a five-star award, so that's five varsity letters with no code violations. We've had upwards of 20 students achieve that award over the last two years, each year. And then we have our high school athlete to the year and our WIA Scholar Athlete. Actually, Riley White should be mad at me for mentioning it. Was our female WIA Scholar Athlete recipient when she comes up to talk about girls soccer. We had a new head coach this spring in Nick DeMullen in boys tennis, who did a great job and even had a, had a first-year experience of going to the state tennis tournament with Luke DeSheen. And then we had nine individuals qualify for track state, which was a heck of an event. If anybody saw some publications from that, not only did they have weather delays due to lightning, but the lights were automatically programmed to go off at 11:00 at night, and they didn't think about that ahead of time. So the lights went out, fortunately not within a meet or a competition, or within, was within a meet, but not within a race. So those had to reboot for a good 15 minutes and get the power underway. Our athletes got back, our seniors got back for graduation at 2:00 AM for graduation that day. So busy day for them. And then two conference championships this spring, which, if we've looked at it, it's a little bit light compared to the success we've had, but that's, that's awesome. Anytime you can get two or more in the Big Rivers, that's a, that's a great season. So upfront, another successful spring season, a little cold, a little snowy on the front end, but we made a lot of great progress and a lot of great accomplishments. So as I'd mentioned, we have a few groups missing, but I've asked them to hit on the, the main things that I know this group likes to hear about and the things that really give me the excitement and the interest and the passion is their overall experience. Again, you can look through the accomplishments, but what these three girls are going to come up and talk about, and then hopefully the boys when they show up at 5:50, is that overall what they brought away, what they're, what they're walking away with. Riley's a senior, the other two girls get to come back for another year, so they, they have the junior perspective. So we'll start with Riley for girls soccer.
Hello, my name is Riley White, and I was a captain for girls soccer this year. And soccer's been an amazing part of my life, and so I was really excited to do high school soccer. And I was really fortunate and honored to be a captain this year. And soccer's taught me so much about resilience, especially with our high school season, having some weather delays at the beginning of the year and suffering a couple injuries here and there. So the hard work really paid off because we were conference champions this year, as well as regional champions. Unfortunately, our season did end on Thursday, but it was an amazing experience, and I got to bond with the team. And we have a lot of underclassmen that are really talented. So I think that coming back next year, our team will be super strong, and hopefully they will get to progress further than we did this year and have another amazing, successful season next season. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I am Mel. The, this was our first year playing on the turf this year for softball. So that was a really big adjustment for us at the beginning of the season. However, it was really beneficial because we got in a lot of home games early in the season before any of the dirt fields were ready. And throughout the ups and downs of the season, the team learned the importance of being supportive and that our teammates really learned how to play for each other. Personally, I am very grateful for the connections and friendships that I have made through softball. Our team is very close-knit, and we enjoy spending time together on and off the field. And we all have really great connections with each other. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Wolfgram, and I'm going to be a senior next year. A challenge that I faced this high school season was that I did not perform as well as my freshman and sophomore years. During my first two years, I had a great seasons in making all-conference and being a Big River stat leader in several areas. However, this year was different. I struggled with my performance and the mental aspect of the game. I would feel down on myself when I was not hitting at my full potential, even though I put in work during, during and after practices. Given this, I continued to work through all of these struggles while, while still being there for my team, while they focused and found success. Participating in sports has taught me a lot of life lessons. If you're not winning, you're learning. I've learned a lot to have a great work ethic and how to trust others and work together to accomplish a common goal. Overall, this team has overcome many challenges this year, and we're going to continue to strive for excellence next year and years to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luke Douglas. I'm a captain of the tennis team. There's a slide. Yeah, and we had a great season this year. It wasn't as successful as our seasons in the past in terms of wins and losses, but in terms of relationships and potential growth, it was very successful. Last season, we had, we had seven seniors on our team, so we only had three guys returning on varsity this year. So it was a big change for all of us. And on top of that, we had a new head coach as John Dahl left and went to Madison. So our assistant, our assistant coach last year, who, who had prior only had baseball coaching experience and baseball playing experience, decided to take on the, take on the role of being our head coach. And it was quite, it was quite an experience. And on top of that, we had our assistant coach, Zacharias, and he has some tennis experience. But yeah, it was, it was all new stuff, and we had, we had just a great season. I made all sorts of new relationships, and I'm really excited to see how these guys can do in the future. We had one, our one singles player, Luke DeSheen, he ended up qualifying for the state competition. And then at, at the BRC, we ended up placing fourth, and our overall record was three and three. And we also had a tournament down in Holman in which we nearly swept the competition. I think we won every single match except three. So that was, that was a success down there. But yeah, it was, it was a great season for the guys tennis team, and I look forward to seeing what these guys can do in the future. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, my name's Justin Robey, and I'm from the Hudson Track Team. I'm the only one that was able to make it today. We had a little miscommunication, but. So our season, this is my, I'm a junior, by the way, and our season, some difficulties we had this year was the weather. Compared to last year, like, we had a lot, a lot of cold and rainy meets this year. I think only like one or two meets towards the end were actually like, especially as I'm a sprinter, I run the 100 and 200, so the wind is actually a big thing. And we had a ton of like headwind this year, which like, five mile an hour wind might not seem like a lot, but like, it can change your time by a lot. And like, especially in track where like .2 seconds is like a huge difference. So it's a big mental thing because as the year goes on, everyone progresses. So at the start of the year, you might not like, you might not think you're doing as great because like last year I finished with a 11.70 100-meter dash, which is my PR, personal record. And coming into the season with some bad weather, I think my first open was like 12:01, which is like, you can get in your head because you know in the offseason you trained as like as hard as you could. You did everything you were supposed to, but by the end of the year, I was, we were able to, I was in the 11-5s, almost 11-4s, which with bad wind is, I was proud of, especially because my main sport is football. So I focused on gaining weight, so it's not always optimal for track, but. Yeah, we had one of the captains who couldn't make it today, Ross. He was the one boy to make it in the, or to state for the boys team. He made it in the 400, and he did all right in state, but he had a big jump from last year to this year. And then the girls team really did good, too. They had a few relays and girls make it. Overall, I think some of the challenges we faced as a team, we haven't overcome because, I mean, the boys' spring sports, lacrosse and baseball are the top two, I would say. So we don't always have the like, I mean, I, we have great athletes, but like, our state, like team lacrosse just won state, obviously, so they have great athletes, too. But I think we, as a team, did really good. We, especially from last year, we jumped up. Our distance was amazing, but yeah, that's about it.
All right.
If you can just flip to that last slide. So lots of great things happening this year. Just in a, in a full total year, it was a ton of fun to look back and kind of try and pick different pictures, but I thought a couple of things really highlighted. It was a beautiful. But, um, I thought a couple of things really highlighted. It was a beautiful graduation night, tremendous weather outside. We had the, the state send offs this year have just been a ton of fun and getting the drum line really if, we, we missed drum line once and it was a big problem. Uh, but now we don't have enough drums for how many kids want to join in that. Uh, it's been, it's been a ton of fun in that aspect too. Um, we did our first ever division three in junior college signing day that was highly attended. I think in total, our number of continuing athletes ended up being 42 seniors that are going to continue from the junior college through the division one level. And I think there are still a few trying to make decisions on where and if they will continue to participate. So a hugely successful year. Big thanks to this group and the support. We've got some really exciting things happening next year. Um, we're looking at online ticketing, um, with a program called GoFan. Um, that's up through the WIA. If you've attended one of their state tournaments, that's the program they use. We're excited about that and trying to streamline that process. Um, we've got Huddle, which is a camera platform and film study, um, where we had a camera installed at the stadium and in the gym that can automatically film and then ultimately stream the lower level games right onto our school YouTube channel, uh, to, to try and help people that aren't able to make those games, check those things out. So just a couple of things that we're really excited about in the next year. And then just the kids themselves and watching what this junior, current junior class can be as senior leaders and, and the next step in their, um, legacy in, in terms of wrapping up their high school career. So thank you for a great year. And, uh, thanks for pivoting for us a little bit tonight. A quick plug for Facilities and Grounds, the turf does look great. Our, our lifespan is expected to be beyond the warranty, which is always good. I see some heads nodding there. Um, they said the stadium is at least five years they're looking at in terms of the quality and how that's responding and, and keeping up. And then our backfields get a little bit more use. Those are right on track, if not better too. So big thanks to Facilities and Grounds for that too.
All right, thanks. Ms. President. Yeah, Rob. Erin, uh, what is the Bell Cow Award?
Good question. So, um, oh, you're going to put me on the spot. I'm forgetting his name. He's a professor at the UW Wisconsin-Madison. He is, he has a very cool initiative across the state and it's only two years old, um, where he is picking leaders that he's asking around the state, public education, public service oriented. He's building basically a network of these Bell Cow, Bell Cow Award winners for people to reach out for questions, for people to reach out for connections and a network. Um, recently in this area, Bruce Larson, for anybody who recognizes that name was a coach, a famous football coach that passed from Somerset High School. He's one of the recipients in Western Wisconsin. So, um, the professor reached out to me and asked for some, some nominations. Adam Cowles has been a tremendous community member, uh, but also football coach and really great math teacher, which sometimes doesn't get talked about as much. So it was a really great way to be able to recognize, uh, Mr. Cowles for his academic, but also extracurricular performance as well. Glad you asked that. Yeah, that was awesome.
Excellent. Good question. And thanks, thanks again Erin for a good, good report and getting all those students involved and getting everything organized. Um, we appreciate your efforts.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now we get to resume the department accomplishments and highlights. Go to the middle school next.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Um, just a little bit of some highlights from our 22, 23 season, uh, season. And Erin left. School year. Uh, we do have three strategic vision goals. Uh, currently we are looking at, um, two goals for our students and one for our staff. One for our students' culture and really trying to make sure that we, um, are looking to strengthen the positive relationships among staff, students and families as caregivers. Looking to increase that on our school perception survey up about a tenth of a point. Our data's not back yet, but, um, we do have some internal indicators that look like we've made some good movement there. Our second student goal is to ensure the curriculum is developmentally responsive, rigorous and relevant to our students' experiences, including the assessment of district curricular priorities. And, um, something new this year, we broke that into grade level math and grade level English language arts goals. Again, our forward data is not back. And our third goal is focusing on our staff and really making sure that we're trying to promote a culture of well-being and safety for all employees. Um, we have a baseline, uh, index score on health, stress management and wellness of 3.23. Looking to increase that by one tenth. Uh, and again, our perception survey data is not back yet. Now we have a, a nice list of year-long highlights. I won't read through all 38, but, uh, hit some of the highlights. Uh, first and foremost, two wonderful educators, Kelly Hackbarth Miller and Sam Peterson were recipients of the 2023 Herb Cole Teacher Fellowship. Our school social studies department teamed with the Wisconsin Historical Society to bring in a traveling museum. Uh, Great Lakes, Small Streams, How Water Shapes Wisconsin. And every child at Hudson Middle School had a chance to visit that traveling museum. Uh, our Hudson Middle School parent group this year for the, uh, first time, hopefully started a new tradition. We held two family bingo nights. We had great turnout for sixth grade. Then we had a seventh and eighth grade night. Um, and we had good, again, good turnout in the, uh, it was kind of just neat seeing families come in and sit down and, and have a nice evening together in our building. Seventh and eighth grade students, or I'm sorry, seventh grade students visited the Guthrie Theater again for the first time since 2019. Our math department reviewed and strengthened our six through eight math scope and sequence, including conducting an independent math audit and the selection of a new six, eight math resource. Um, we got back to some of our, some of our finish strong events. So we did student versus staff basketball, student versus staff volleyball, big highlights, student versus staff tug of war. Imagine that staff won, but they, they had a great time. We had a lot of state champions. So we had an eighth grade E cyber mission team that were named state champions and regional finalists. A seventh grade E cyber mission team that were named state champions and regional finalists. We had two state champions in the Wisconsin Middle School Science Olympiad. We had a middle school team placed first in the Wisconsin Middle Division Future Problem Solvers Scenario Team Writing Challenge. Two students named to the middle level all-state choir, four students named to the middle level honor choir, two students named to the middle of honor band and two students named to the state solo ensemble with one being named exemplary musician. Um, number 32, this is really neat. Our, we had 54 eighth grade web leaders this year who not only do they meet with all the incoming fifth graders and help with the transition into middle school, but then they follow up by going in and visiting those advisories throughout the year and maintaining those relationships. This year they hosted two carnivals for our sixth grade students, one before holiday break and one, um, right here in mid-May. Uh, and then they hosted the scavenger hunt tours for our incoming fifth graders for this year. And then, uh, finally, the one thing I wanted to highlight, number 34, is we, we did a nice job expanding on our implementation of co-teaching language arts and math in the eighth grade to include co-teaching language arts and math in seventh grade and sixth grade as well. So, um, again, those are just some of the highlights. It was a, a wonderful year and at that time I'll open it up for any questions.
All right. Any board members have questions? Otherwise, thank you for the report. Great job. Keep up the good work. All right. Thank you for not requiring me to ask you to clap. So that's good. All right. IT is up next.
Okay, we're actually eat because you know, that's how we roll in IT, but, um, you can share as many as you like.
Are those fish?
This is certainly going to be far too tall. Here we go. Hi, everyone. Um, so we had a really big year in IT as we always do. Um, if, in case you didn't know, most of the things that we do are heavily reliant on the things that the IT department does. And you don't notice it until you actually, those things go down. So thankfully we didn't have a year full of outages where people really noticed that things went wrong. So, uh, first and foremost, we did have one retiree this year. Uh, James Peterson retired after many, many years with the district, um, on our department. He was actually the originator of the IT department way back then. So, uh, just want to thank him for all of his years of service. Um, throughout the year, we've had projects that have been really, um, people facing, front-facing with, um, staff, families, community, um, and then a lot of projects also behind the scenes in the walls, the ceiling, you name it, um, where we go. So a couple of things want to draw your attention to. The first one, uh, we started a home course that is accessible actually to all of our families and all of our staff, um, that any of you can access to increase your cyber smarts. So if you want to do a little fun course to beef up your cyber knowledge, go ahead. It's all listed in here. Um, that's provided included in our simulated phishing attacks, uh, software. So feel free to check that out. We had quite a few staff members participate in that and the feedback was pretty good. So some of the videos are a little nerdy, but, um, the information's really good. Second piece, um, is really twofold focusing on family engagement. Uh, our family shared with us that coming for face-to-face events is really challenging. We know that parenting is really hard and it's really busy. So this year we decided to take some of our face-to-face events and flip them to more of a webinar-based, um, uh, experience. And we had a great response for our very first one. We were really excited. Um, we didn't know what to expect. We didn't know who was going to come. We didn't know what it was going to look like, but we knew we were going to record it. So people could watch it after. Um, it was really successful. Uh, Erin Walsh from the Spark and Stitch Institute talked to us about, um, kids, teens and screens and just about like, what does it look like to really parent what we call a digital native or a student who, or child who has been raised through and through on technology. Um, and it was amazing. Uh, the chat was just as powerful as the speaker. So we had families and parents sharing stories, asking questions, um, and it was amazing. So this is going to be the first of many. Uh, we're looking to have several more webinars next year. Um, and in addition to that, we also offered our sixth grade course for all families to complete with their students. Uh, it's a parenting course about raising teenagers. Um, and next year we're expanding that to ninth grade as well. So in partnership with the Mental Health Fiber Communities Grant. So thanks for that. Um, and then last but not least, just around the like forward-facing pieces, we had a cybersecurity curriculum, zero credit bearing course last summer. We had 23 students sign up for a summer school course between eighth and 12th grade. Um, many of them finished this online course and we had one student actually take industry standard, uh, exams. And we'll ultimately continue that moving forward. We have a cybersecurity course starting in the fall for credits. So we're really, really excited for that. Um, we're going to hopefully have students leave high school, being able to enter into some of these really high, high level jobs and make way more money than we could imagine. Um, so good for them. Um, just a couple of other things want to talk about. We partnered with our community education friends, uh, to have some community education classes that are really more focused on some of our, uh, senior community members. Uh, the first one that we had was a cellphone and tablet course, just on how to use your cellphone. What seems easy for most of us, maybe not Jamie, but most of us, uh, what seems really simple for most, Jamie, we're going to have another course next year.
I'll take the remedial one, I guess. But pick on the senior member here, yes.
Has nothing to do with age. Um, no, uh, but it, it, it was a really fun experience. We had, um, 24 people come to a cellphone and tablet course and it was incredibly fun. We had another course called Interest to Cybersecurity. Um, and it was amazing. And what came out of that is that moving forward, we're going to have a seniors-only tech club. Uh, that will happen every single month for our most senior community members to come and join. All are welcome, obviously. But there is one rule, you have to bring a treat or a snack to share with the group. So like, just keep that in mind if you come. And if you come empty-handed, we will turn you away. So, uh, just keep that in mind. Uh, we also had our IT transition staff with, um, the transition students between the ages of 18 and 21. They come to IT every day for about an hour and a half and they work in our department. We're incredibly thankful to have them. They will continue next year. And then the last two things is just more behind the walls of what we do with installing projectors, laptops, Chromebooks, you name it. We did all of that. And we really, um, utilized our E-rate funding to increase our network capacity, our infrastructure, and we'll continue to do that. So if you get to talk to anyone, tell them how important E-rate is. It makes a huge difference for us in Hudson. Um, we just really appreciate all your support. Last thing is that 23% of our staff reported our simulated phishing links in our most recent campaign. So on our first run in like 2016 or 17, 30% of people clicked on the bad link. That's not great. Um, but we've made drastic improvements since then. So 23% of our staff reported these simulated links, which is a really high number. Um, and that we're seeing that consistently and we're improving or increasing the difficulty level. So it's been a really exciting year. We've been with staff a lot and doing a lot of projects. So thanks.
All right. Any questions for Jen? Otherwise, uh, I guess this computer trend is going to probably stay. So I think your, your department, your job security is there.
You all heard it. It's on film. I'm good. Thanks. Okay. Mic drop. No, okay.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for the family engagement webinars and I have little kids. It's hard to make the extra meetings, having things recorded and trying to figure out what to do with kids and screens. So this will be very good for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks. And like, please, like parents, if you're watching, take the devices away. Like you have full permission to take them away at night. We just need you to send them back during, in the morning to school. So like, you're the boss at home. So just remember those things. Thanks.
Thank you. So Bonnie, are you giving this report, Financial Services? You have to follow somebody that was giving out treats.
I know.
How about chocolate chip cookies? Do you have any of those or?
They will, yeah. Oh, yeah. It was a cooperative joint with IT. So. I know. We, we process payment hopefully.
I'm sure.
Okay. So I know financial services won't be as exciting as IT, but, um, this year I guess we just had a lot of growth in our department. Uh, me being new to the department, trying to figure out how we've done things and really trying to move towards paperless. We use a lot of paper. Um, so our initiative is to really get rid of paper and go automate it as much as we can. So I'm not going to read everything, but, um, some of our big highlights this year mostly were approved by, at the board level. So P cards. So we are, um, we have completed our pilot. Um, we had about six different departments pilot them during the end of this year, school year, and we're in the process of rolling those out for next year. So that should be really helpful, I think, for parent groups. And, um, that's where it kind of came from was a parent group that had to put out like a thousand dollars and then wait for reimbursement. So I think this will be a really good fix for our district. Um, food service management company, um, when I came, there was a lot of discussion about the offerings that our kids have in our district. So we are excited to have a recommendation tonight. And Mr. Leary is here tonight, um, to answer any questions, but, um, recommending to move towards chart wells for next year. So I think our kids will have a really incredible offerings next year. So next one. Um, cross-training, um, what we learned when I came, we, I think we've gone through three payroll people in the last two years. Is that about right? Um, so we're doing a lot of cross-training. So now we have two people that can do payroll at all times. Um, and then, um, we have somebody that will be retiring in about a year and accounts payable. So we're looking at more cross-training. So more people to know what everybody's doing. Um, we finished our policy review of the 600 series. So I think like everybody else, those were a little outdated. So I think we're up to date on those. Um, I think that's about it. Um, we unfortunately had to do some bidding with our insurance, which also received tonight, but it's been a great year. Um, really excited to be a part of this district and I think we're moving in the right direction.
All right. Great. Any questions for Bonnie? I know she's got some things later on about like our budget outlook and all that, but let's just keep it on a positive note for now, right?
Thanks.
All right. Student services. Yeah, we don't usually clap after Bonnie gives a report to us. So, you know, let's, let's give her that moment, right?
We've got old muffins and donuts upstairs. If you guys need any.
I think I have treats in my desk. If you want to go get them for everybody. So real quick, just proud and honored to introduce our assistant directors in our department. Uh, we survived our first season as a team, as, as a team this year. So I'm glad they showed up tonight to talk about department highlights.
All right. I'll start us off. The one thing I didn't have here for our students that I forgot, we had a really nice collaborative effort between one of our occupational therapists, Cindy Gergig, um, one of our center-based specialist teachers at the high school, Tyler Hunter, his students, and Kyle Flanagan, a science teacher, to design and 3D print attachment for student lunch trays. So some of our kids with some orthopedic and other fine and gross motor issues can feed themselves more independently. So we're working on a lot of things like that was, I forgot to put that on there, but did not want to forego that one. Um, other student highlights, our student health services administered 12,370 medications this year. We had no errors, which is super impressive. They don't have a lot of errors, but they have no error, no errors is really noteworthy. Um, the district, we received an 85% return rate on our indicator 14 survey, which is one year after high school, our students with disabilities are surveyed and there are grant dollars tied to that. Um, not only do we have a very high return rate, we have a very high success rate. So great. Our kids are being successful after and that's bringing back some monies to the district. And that's allowing, um, us to fund some really cool things that we're doing. Um, and we have great support from internal people like Jen and other departments here in the district, uh, building our kids' skills. To tie with that, Robin Revard, our transition coordinator, presented at the Wisconsin Transition Conference and she had standing. Conference and she had standing room only. They asked her to come back. It was, she sent me pictures. It was quite a big deal. So really proud of her and being able to share some of those accomplishments with our peers across the state.
Keep on with looking at our team or our staff. We did have 16 teachers complete the teacher child interaction training or TCIT. We do have in-house coaches that have been specifically trained to do that. It is, when you hear about it, it's a very simple interaction technique, but the way that we're building relationships with our students and some of the classroom management is just unbelievable. I know it's successful when I've got principals that call and ask, can we get so and so trained in TCIT? Like it's, they see it as being very successful. And then we also had 21 teachers from all levels, K through 12, go through PSYOP training, which is the sheltered instruction observation protocol. It was designed specifically for working with children who are learning English as a second language, but the techniques and the skills that they're learning are great for all learners. Pointing out just some really simple things like at the elementary level when they're learning about writing and you have your introduction and your body and your conclusion. To an ESL child who's also learning all those words, body means something very different than the body of writing. And a teacher went like, whoa, wait, no wonder why my student was looking at me like that. Like, yeah, just thinking through some of those, those specific things that we need to teach. And then our community is our other area. Our EL program hosted the celebration of nations. I know I saw a lot of you there that night. Last year was their first year doing that. I think we counted like 55 people came through the door last year. This year, thanks to a grant from the education foundation, we were able to bring in food and performers. We more than tripled that number. I don't know the exact count of it. I know we had 250 like programs that we were giving out to families as they came to the door and all of those were gone. And that was going to a family level. So that was super exciting. And then you want to talk about indicator rate?
I get the really exciting indicator information. So this is again, one of our federal indicators. It's family engagement of students with disabilities. After every annual IEP, part of our process and processing the paperwork is garnering feedback. We're only required to do this by the state every five years. We've elected to do this annually and collect our own data so we can be responsive to families' needs and get feedback on our work. And just the big success is getting the feedback because you know, families get a lot of emails. It's a lot of information pushed out. So we appreciate that. We've increased our, our response rate and some of our teams have taken that data and are doing specific work around it. Our staff is also surveyed and we have a lot of feedback. So it's, it's a comparison between what our parents are perceiving, what we are doing and what our perceptions are and where those things meet. So we're still collecting data for this year and you know, I'll be glad to come back and fish through all that for you sometimes.
And then our last thing within the community, our early childhood special education program does an early childhood screening for any children before they are in 4K or kindergarten. And last year we started collaborating with the public library and so we hold it up in that children's section and it's so much fun. That Hudson Public Library, they are so welcoming to us. They have so many great activities for children as they come through. And next year we're expanding that to do more days. It's, some of these little kids come all dressed up for it. So we're going to try to make it like a bigger deal with prizes and like gift bags or whatever, but. And then the other inclusion and equitable practices, I apologize, that is still on there from last year. That should have been deleted before I shared it with Tara. That's my bad. I apologize.
Well, to.
So we, I mean, yeah, we're still doing those things, obviously.
The expansion of coaching gym did hit on that at the high school too. I can speak. This year we co-taught 33 sections. Next year we're pushing to 48. So we're continuing to expand that and serve kids in their regular environment with their typically developing peers and having access to content experts.
So all the things that are kind of.
We're still.
Still doing, but yes.
All right. Any questions for student services? All right. Go ahead.
Well, you know, I love you guys. Because everything you've did for my kids and for other kids and what I see when I see what you're doing, I see data driven practices, results driven and creative. And I mean, that can be said for the whole school district and teachers, what they do. It's just fantastic and I'm so proud of all of you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. That deserves applause. Next up, teaching and learning.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to start with a recognition. So this year we, or last year, I guess going into this year, we eliminated a position and that was the assistant director of secondary teaching and learning. Lisa Scoian as the assistant director of elementary teaching and learning picked that up and did an amazing job. So she has been an invaluable member of the team and everything that I'm talking about, she's been involved in some way. So a big thanks to Lisa for all of her work. So I divided the highlights into five different categories. And first one is curriculum, sort of the most basic function of our department. Few highlights there. We presented on elementary science, which was mystery science. Excited about that. You all saw the presentation on that. Jim had alluded to our accelerated revision of middle school math, a very involved process, including the audit that he mentioned, resulting into HMH into math being implemented next year. Excited about that and very confident that you, it will yield positive results. Music is super fun. There's some different resources in there that will help us move our music department into more music production, music writing, music creation, as well as the performance. So that's going to be a great for our kids. Art, mainly additional resources, not a switch in the curricular direction. World language, you'll see a lot of things there. That is a tough department to review the resources. If you look at those, I don't know what a lot of those say, but we did review all those resources and excited about enhancing their programs. The next thing in curriculum is our increased clarity using Embark that used to be called Build Your Own Curriculum or BYOC. We're to a point where we consider that fully implemented by the end of the summer. Everything will be up to date and we'll be able to use that resource, not only for visibility and transparency, but also for curricular improvement. There's a lot that, that will help us do. Moving into engagement, looking at a few different ways we engaged community and staff members. First one, you'll hear more about this later, but the human growth and development ad hoc committee process. Big hello and thanks to some community members that are part of the committee that are out there. So thank you very much. We'll leave that one for later since we'll go into that in more depth. We do our rounding and luncheon listens. That's where we go to each school. We do this twice a year at each school, spend the day or a half a day, depending on the size of school, listening to teachers, asking a few questions and developing and understanding of how things are going in the schools. This last year, a theme came out and it was crystal clear. Everyone was saying we need to do a better job of supporting new teachers and we have more new teachers than ever before. It's a demanding job. There's a lot of expectations and they need support. And the neat thing was it was veteran teachers that were calling for that. It wasn't new teachers saying we need more. It was our colleagues saying we need to do more to support them. We're able to respond to that and make some adjustments resulting in what I think will be great. A year one professional learning calendar where we took all the things that we tend to kind of cram in right at the beginning, spread it out. They really thoughtfully looked at when will this information be important and how can we make sure that they're supported? A lot of that support is in collaboration with human resources, making sure that when we bring on new teachers, we're doing everything we can to support them. Teaching and learning advisory council, we've had that group for a few years, continuing to expand their role. We focused on family engagement. We studied a book together and that also resulted in some suggested new practices. And then we have a family engagement committee and we go, our, our goal is to ensure that Hudson is viewed as the best community in Wisconsin to raise a family. We view everything we do with family engagement to help move us toward that vision and we've had a lot of good stuff happening there. Moving into instructional leadership, so it's always curriculum, instruction, assessment are sort of the three cornerstones of teaching and learning. There's a few other things that we're touching on, but within instructional leadership, our study of science of reading, we've presented on that already, but yielded tremendous results. We've had over 100 teachers volunteer to be part of this group. We will be implementing a new core phonics program for grades K-2. All teachers will be trained. We've now purchased that and we're ready to move forward. Very excited about that. Educator effectiveness, our tool for evaluating teachers. We continue to try to make sure that that is a tool that's used to provide feedback and support as well as evaluation, but not, not just an evaluation process. Need to make sure that it also provides meaningful feedback. We're working on some things we've already done, but we'll be enhancing that actually starting Wednesday, we'll be working on that. Assessment, we presented on FastBridge a while back, but one thing that we missed from our old universal screener is what's called the quadrant report. This is where you compare a student's growth and their achievement. We recreated that in the system. Our teachers did an amazing job. Elementary teachers said, you know what? Just give us some graph paper. Let's do this ourselves. They liked the idea of actually physically interacting with the data and it really helps teachers pinpoint what students need additional support. Moving on to inclusive practices. Hudson Virtual Charter School continues to thrive. We're not bringing a ton of kids from other districts, but we're certainly going in the right direction with open enrollment. This is one of the major tools we have in place that has helped us reverse the trend in open enrollment. And one of the most exciting things with HVACS is the work that Sarah is doing, Sarah Engstrom-Wy, the coordinator for the program, to partner with our high school teachers. So we're offering virtual courses with our teachers. The virtual program is great, but we have to make sure that we're, we have enough students to offset the expense of partnering with different agencies that provide the content. If we have our teachers teach those sections, it's all benefit. It's great for kids. It's great for our teachers. She's doing great work with that. And then the last thing, I'm going to skip over the rigor team conclusion and end with the elementary reading improvement or intervention improvement. Our reading teachers, we've asked them to shift their, their role into a more of a consultant role, knowing that we can increase inclusivity, having kids receive their necessary reading instruction in their classroom. If the reading teacher leverages their expertise to build the expertise of teachers. So they're going in consulting with teachers, helping them understand what the right next steps are. And we call it, we refer to it as a prescriptive process, just like going to the doctor, you go to the expert, they say do this for six weeks. We're going to check in a little bit. This is how you do this. That's the approach we're taking with reading intervention. We've had over 120 total consultations and every reading teacher has embraced this work and is doing a great job. And that's all I've got.
Right. Questions for Dave? Otherwise, the, appreciate your report. It's kind of the bread and butter. That was the phrase I was looking for of every school district's teaching and learning. But not that we've got well-rounded in lots of areas, but lots going on. So thank you very much. Let's give Dave a round. All right. We're, that, we're up to Willow River and Sue Helmers back at the podium or back at the microphone.
Getting a lot in tonight. I am going to speak to the highlights of Willow River for this year. As we were reflecting on the year, we recalled that we started the year with a gigantic crane and a scaffolding tunnel that came into our building, which we shared until about Thanksgiving. And I wanted to really highlight the flexibility and just kind of can do spirit of the staff and students. Although it was nothing like the high school when they were building, there was, were some distractions and our elementary students did a really nice job staying focused and teachers just really went with, kind of went with the flow and it really didn't take too much away from our learning. So that's how we started and we ended our school year with a big carnival in the park, in the playground and kind of referenced how we started and how we ended in the playground area, but with very different focuses. Another thing that we really wanted to focus on this year was family engagement and did a lot of family communication, challenged teachers to reach out to families, making those deposits, speaking to that T sit or that program that Fafani recall or referenced. We also had two teachers at Willow put together a program called Parenting with Pride and that was using those strategies that we're teaching teachers and sharing that with families. And we had over 25 people attend that and really had rave reviews on just giving parents some tips on how to work with their kids at home. We also, of course, focused on reading and so spent a lot of time building students' engagement in reading and excitement and interest in reading. We did lots of goals and challenges and kind of tracking what kids were reading. We did chapter book challenges and really it was all hands on deck and anybody that was around to help would pull kids to read, just really focusing on getting kids in, into books and, and excited about reading. Some of the traditions that Willow has had for a long time include a young authors day that has been around for, oh gosh, many, many years. And this year's theme was dream big. And we invited two people who have overcome challenges in their lives. One was Jesse Horn, who is a champion cup, a national champion cup stacker. I wasn't even aware there was such a thing. And he is a student with autism or an individual with autism and spoke to how he overcame some of his challenges throughout his life and now is able to travel the world and speak. And he has a book. We also had a woman, Lindsay Morland, who has written some books, who speaks to her own experiences with autism. And so it was a really cool message for the kids and just an, an event that really brings our school together. We also had our annual music and art show, which I had a brand new music and art teacher. And so imagine their surprise when I approached them and said, well, you're going to put on this really big thing and there's like 200 people that come. But they did a great job and we switched it around. It used to be kind of a raffle silent auction kind of thing and now it is stations and families work on art together and it's really fun to see. And then I think our final highlight is something that I referenced earlier with the award with Lana. We have created a partnership with the PIPS and we, of course, did the migration celebration, but we also did a program or a, an event this fall called Breath of Words, where our fourth graders again created a written piece about themselves and then were invited down to the studio at the PIPS to create a piece of art to match that. And then we're given an area in one of the galleries to display this, their work. And so it was a really cool experience for the students and families to come and have, you know, hors d'oeuvres and walk through the gallery. And so I see it as a really, when we talk about community engagement, I see the PIPS and their, their proximity to Willow as a great partnership and a way to get our kids involved in the community and get our families to a really great resource that we have right here in Hudson. So just a really great year and I'm glad to have completed my second year and excited to the years to come at Willow. Questions?
Any questions on, on Willow? Otherwise, I think you have another report.
I do.
All right.
Just going to be up here again. So my next report is on 4K, the district 4K program. We are in our sixth year and just looking, I had pulled some of our enrollment numbers. January 2023, our student count was 346, which is up 33 from last year at that time. And so that's exciting to see that the program continues to grow. We have a lot of open enrolled kids, 38, 37 coming in next year and about a fourth of those stay in our district. So I think it lures people in. At this point in time, we have 266 students fully registered, which is about where we have been. We're starting to just keep track of our numbers so that we're like, oh, is this where we were last year or not? And so we are right on track. This year we will, or next year, I'm sorry, we will continue with three school sites, offering school age care for the PM for students. So really great. We've had, one of my favorite things about the 4K program are the family outreach events. That is part of the program. We have to do 87 and a half hours, but it's really, it's very refreshing and fun for me to see the families getting together and the kids too. You know, they see each other at the, their sites, but then to come together, we've done at White Camp Park, at Castle Park, and just bringing those families together. We, I surveyed the families this year just to kind of see, I think I did it the second year, so it hasn't been for a few years, just to see where, what the perception of the community is for those that are involved in the program. And 95% of families were satisfied or extremely satisfied with their child's experience, stating things like the social and academic growth, kindergarten readiness, making friends, and appreciating that their kids really love coming to school. 91% of parents were satisfied or extremely satisfied with their own experience as an adult or as a parent, noting that they had great teachers, the transportation option makes it accessible for everyone, having daycare options and aligned to the district schedule. So I felt really good about what our perception or how people are perceiving the program. Obviously, there were also areas of suggestions of next steps. And so I will be looking at those to create a plan for next year. Just haven't gotten to that yet. But now that school is over, we can move into that for summer planning. So I'll use that information and look at next steps for the program. I've also surveyed the staff to see what kinds of things they need in order to continue to grow the program. Some of our 4K teachers have been in the program. And so we're looking for new and interesting or new and relevant things for them to learn. And so that's what we will take that data and look at what they're ready for. Next year, we are, or this summer, we're looking at aligning our 4K standards to our kindergarten standards to make sure that we have a smooth transition for kids that are finishing 4K and entering into kindergarten. So that work starts next week. We are implementing a phonics program. That's only about 10 minutes a day, but feel that that will build a foundation for our kids going into kindergarten. And we are always looking for ways to increase the collaboration. We have 12 sites. And so it's always a challenge to get childcare teachers together when they are busy during the day. And so coming up with some plans of ways that we can build the capacity of our teachers and support each other through that process. So that is all things 4K. Any questions?
Any questions for Sue on that? Those satisfaction ratings among parents are above 90% like that. That's just outstanding. It's something to be very proud of. Thank you for doing that and, you know, checking in with the people that we serve. So thank you for your reports. Great job.
Thank you.
And we have, last but not least, Tracy, you have three reports, three areas. So I'll let you pick which one you want to talk about first.
I'll start with the community relations. And a lot of what's listed here, you're familiar with, either as presented to a board meeting or as a community member, as a parent. There's lots of activities that happen within the district that's supported through our community relations efforts. This school year started with a fairly comprehensive hiring campaign. We, we did a lot of new things this year to try and bring staff on. We created a join our team video, which had a fantastic group of staff who talked about what's great about working here at the Hudson School District. We had hiring kiosks at football games, if some of you remember, having to be at those events as well. A large social media campaign. So really reaching out as much as we could to make people aware. I noticed that the high school sign still says we're hiring. So time to update that one a little bit. But in addition to some of those highlights, one of the things in some of what I'm talking about, people have already mentioned. But this year, we have developed the format to start presenting podcasts to families and community members. The Parenting with Pride group, two fantastic teachers who led that will be able to continue that parenting skills building initiative through community ed moving forward. But we also recorded our first podcast about transitioning back to school. So we're excited to actually launch those in the fall. IT will be working with us to put those together. And I was talking with Fafani earlier today about some opportunities in student services as well and helping reach our English language learners and families through those podcasts. So that's kind of an exciting opportunity for us. We began the transition to a new mass communication system, which we'll be implementing fully starting July 1. We're just a little anxious as we move to this new system. It offers, so most people are familiar with Blackboard, which is our current mass communication system. You get a message on snow days and all of that. The new system we are moving to is called Parent Square. It's much more robust and will offer us improved ways to communicate with our ELL families. So we're excited about that. There's lots of functions in that. School safety, one item that, well, several, but really working with our law enforcement leaders to, we pulled them together in the fall to go over our threat assessment, our school safety planning. How can we work better as partners to make sure that our schools are safe? One of those initiatives is to work with St. Croix County Dispatch so that they have access to our cameras in the event of a school emergency. And we're continuing to work with them along with IT. And we'll continue to train them regularly. It's not an intuitive system. So we want to make sure that in the event of a crisis, that they're ready to go. Regarding community ed, we had another very good year. We've continued to grow our offerings with increased participation. Ultimately, that's what we want. I'll do a shout out to IT again, to Jen for that senior citizens group. They are a very excited group of folks to come back and learn more about technology. Pickleball, seniors are our major audience, it seems. So pickleball, we can't get enough gym space for pickleball. So we have two instructors now that have full schedules this summer to offer to folks. Another big event for us, the Daddy Daughter Dance. We had 1,100 participants, thanks to facilities and grounds for all their work in supporting that event and to Bev Hagan, who put that together. Just to put that in perspective, that event is larger than prom. It's larger than many of the events that we host as a school district with overwhelming positive response. We're looking at, sorry, Dustin, another event to add to that, one that is a mother-son event this fall and then also a family event in February. So good stuff there. Facility rentals, you can see the numbers there. We, we continue to use our facilities as much as we possibly can. Dance recitals have grown for us, but that brings in revenue for us as well. So that's, that's good news for us. Switching to school age care, our numbers have, we've steadily recovered from COVID. Our staffing hasn't recovered in quite the same way as our numbers from parents. So we did increase our staffing ratios this year to 25 to 1. It's higher than what the state recommendation is, but we aren't, we don't fall under the same licensing requirements. We just use that as our guide as we're doing our planning. As Sue noted, we do offer the 4K wrap care in the afternoon at EP Rock, North Hudson and Willow. Probably one of the things when we looked at our feedback, parents are anxious because the numbers, because of staffing and being able to get into the program. So that's usually a great concern. Next year, we're looking at some other options when we do registration for like 4K so that it is, you know, perhaps going to a lottery versus first come, first served, those kinds of things to, to help. And then I just included our most recent survey from parents and the response from parents, which is all very good. Our parents like our program. It's convenient. It's a good value. They enjoy the programming that's offered, the number of activities that kids get to participate in. So overall, a very good response from our families.
Yes, looks like 93 to 95% on those areas. That's, again, those are excellent. Whenever you can get that many people that are agreeing or strongly agreeing, that's good value and everything. That's, that's great results. Any other questions for community relations or after-school care? All right. Thank you, Tracy, for the report. Appreciate it. Darn, we don't have any more reports this month. We have to wait a whole month before we get another set of reports. It looks like it's going to be heavy on elementary school next time because we only had one this time. But all right. Next up, who's given the enrollment update? Is that?
It looks like I will do that.
You haven't had a chance to talk.
Sure. Yes, there we go. Thanks, Dave. So this is what we do this time of year. We looked at 23, 24 projected class sizes. We have the information on high school, middle school on the following pages. With respect to the elementary numbers, you can see the chart looks very green at this point. We only have one area that we're specifically monitoring, the Willow River second grade. So again, this is the roll up into 23, 24, what we're projecting their class sizes to be. It's not a summary of what the 22, 23 school year was. So going into 23, 24, second grade, we currently have 22, 23 kids. And our class size guidelines for K2 is 18 to 22. However, going to third grade, we go to 22 to 27 for our class size guidelines. So you can see with a lot of this, again, there's a lot of green, but there's also a lot of sections that are right up against that 22 number when it comes to the K2 area. We did some last minute adjustments too in first grade, where we're going down in sections at Willow for first grade to two sections compared to what we had predicted at three and then North Hudson as well to two. But we just moved that section up to second grade, which had a few more kids. Certainly, it's the story of there's the 26, 27 kids per section. And there's also the 15 and 16 kids per section, depending upon the building. And that's just the conundrum we have at this time. Our enrollment overall is at 2010, which is substantially lower, I think about 50 kids.
60.
60 kids, lower than what we were last time or last year. And then also, we're looking at right now at 96 sections. And, but we'll continue to monitor because again, there's so many that are right on the cusp of 26, 27 kids in the class or 22. That we'll continue to monitor that during this next, the next few weeks and months. Middle school, high school, just as an enrollment update. And I think I'm just going to periodically update this so that we have more spaces going. So I like to have a running total. So June 2023, you can see the total enrollment at the middle school is predicted to be 1141. And the high school, 1686. So I believe just a few years ago, middle school was about 1,300, 1,350. And high school is 1,800 kids. So you can see the declining numbers there. And we're hopeful that it'll rebound at some point. But right now, this is where we're at.
So that ninth grade projection is a roll up of eighth grade. And that's where we capture some of the folks that are in private schools in K8.
Yes. There's bigger bump going into ninth grade than there is going into sixth grade, although there's still a little bit of a bump going into sixth grade. And that is inclusive of those kids already.
Yeah, I can't remember the last time we've had a freshman class less than 400, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we have or since I've been here.
Yeah, right. It's been a while. All right. Any questions on that? But just to be clear, rolling back up to the elementary because we get emails on this from parents concerned that number of kids in their class and so forth. But just to show, because we do have six buildings as opposed to numbers where, you know, when you lose a section, you don't have a big impact. The smaller the building, the bigger impact on the number of sections. So we're losing 60 students in our elementary. And these, this is K through five, so it's not 4K.
It's not 4K. There's a column there, but the numbers are really pretty premature at this point.
Yep. So, but even with that K to five number, 60 lower, we still have the same number of sections, basically.
No, we're lower. We have 101 this year.
Okay.
But we've already done all the cuts between retirements and then some layoffs.
Okay. I thought we were already under 100. So I was just wrong remembering on my part.
We were at 100 and we added that fourth grade or third grade at Rivercrest at the last minute last year. That put us to 101. We were planning this year for 97. But just, we always try to be adaptable to what the numbers are showing us. And in this case, both at Willow and North, we went down.
Yes, Megan.
Yeah, I was wondering when you do these projections, because I was one of those parents who was like, oh, no, I didn't register my kid yet. Do you assume that the children are moving forward, even if the parents are a little slow and doing the online registration?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And we worked through a lot.
In specific.
The principals are all over this. I see Sue out there. Exactly. And we work collaboratively. We have lists. We do cross-checking. We do a lot of analysis because this also leads to our placement for boundary exceptions, which we're going to talk about later. So we do our best to make sure the numbers are as good as possible.
So just the reason we want to make sure we get this in here is because if you remember last year, people always asked us, well, how did you not see this coming? Why didn't you just add staff? I mean, as you look at that right now, I mean, the only one that is maybe, a maybe is that Willow River second grade. And really, second grade's historically, we've allowed that to go red a little bit because in third grade, the class size guideline jumps up quite a bit. But for the most part, as we're sitting, I mean, these are kids that we know are coming to school here next year and have been verified in the district. And so as we're sitting right now, we're either at class size guidelines or under class size guidelines in every single section except one out of 96 as we sit. So just as a kind of a, just as a heads up. So when people do email or they have questions about it, you'll be able to kind of speak to it, you know? And we'll give, we'll get this report to you each month and so you can kind of see what's been going on. But, and we'll continue to make adjustments, so.
Right. Any other questions regarding enrollment projections?
Amy, can you hear me?
Heather. I can hear you.
Hey. So I know when we've looked at the elementary numbers, what I think that what we've heard is that we've got like 2,800 capacity and about 2010 enrolled. Is that about right?
About, about 2,900 capacity. And yeah, just over 2,000 enrolled.
And what do those capacity numbers look like then? If we scroll back to the middle and high school totals, what are those compared to capacity? What's capacity in those two buildings?
So middle school has capacity of about 1,350. And high school has capacity of about 1,950, 2,000. And a lot of it comes down to with the high school, how, and even really the middle school a little bit, is how you utilize the rooms. So whether or not rooms sit empty when teachers are having a planning period. So the high school can ramp up its capacity without additional square footage needed. So both buildings, you know, right now, we are sitting quite comfortably in just about all of our buildings.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. With that, we move on to the action portion of our agenda. But we've been going for an hour and a half. Is there a preference for us to take a five-minute comfort break? I saw one nod. That's enough. All right. We'll do a four-minute, 59-second break. All right. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the expenditure language on the screen. Or I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, you know, everyone's jumping at that. Yes.
Mr. President.
I'd like to make a motion to move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,749,044.78.
All right. There's been a motion. A second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's approved. Next up, human growth and development. Dave, you are given, you gave this report at the work session. And now following that, you alluded to the fact we'd be taking up something along these lines. So what's the administration's recommendation?
Yeah, so you can see the administration recommendation, essentially on the last part of this memo. But I just want to quickly walk through the way the memo was organized. It starts with background and legal requirements. The legal requirements are based on the concept that if the board decides to include human growth and development as part of the health curriculum, we need to go through a certain process. That's the process we engaged in with an ad hoc council made up of members of the community. I've said this before, but I am so grateful for the members that committee. They did an amazing job. The 51 members that joined from the beginning, but especially the 20 that stuck with it till the very end. A very productive process. And it definitely affirms my belief in this community that if we get together, we have conversations, we can tackle tough conversations or tough topics We can tackle tough conversations or tough topics and come out on a, uh, in, in a good place. Um, so after the legal requirements, we get into those areas for which we found consensus and agreed. And that was the overwhelming majority of the topics related to human growth and development. And then the final part were those areas where we could not reach consensus and they are articulated in the table. So essentially the administration, the administrative recommendation is to approve this guidance. And I say guidance because it is not curriculum. This isn't a scope and sequence. There are essentially guardrails we'd use that if approved, you would use this to then bring this to the experts, the health teachers who would write the curriculum using this guidance as the basis for their decision making. Um, we started with some original content for consideration in the areas that we could not reach consensus. Those were specifically and almost exclusively related to gender identity. So that's what that final table outlines. We have the original content and then the suggestions from group A. The suggestions from group A, for group B, and then the administrative recommendations. Looked for compromise as much as we could. I do want to mention, one time I mentioned this before, but group A, their position is they would rather not have the topic of gender identity addressed in the curriculum, but if it is, they would like us to consider those recommendations. I did consider them as best I could in the administrative recommendation. When I went through this process, I thought I was gonna be typing for an hour or so of all the administrative recommendations, but realized there was very little disagreement. Um, one of the areas that takes up a lot of, um, text in this document are the definitions that are associated with gender identity and sexual orientation. Um, just some context, that would represent one lesson in seventh grade and one lesson in eighth grade. That would be the totality of the inclusion of that information. Uh, it does take up a lot of space here, but it needs to be called out. We want to be one hundred percent transparent. So not only the community knows what we're recommending, you know what we're recommending and the guidance to the committee that will be writing the curriculum is clear and easy to follow. So the recommendation would be to approve this, um, as, as articulated with the consensus area and the administrative recommendations.
Okay, any questions of Dave?
I have some questions. Um, after looking at it, I, I've gone through some of these definitions that wanted, that are recommended to be added. Um, gender questioning, gender creative, intersex, cisgender. I, I have seen a national public debate about this. It's been on fire on our news. I'm not sure that this is the time to be adding in terms that our public is still debating about. Um, I don't think it's in the best interest of our district to continue those.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I guess I have a, I have a clarifying question, Mister President. So the original content for consideration that's in that blue far left corner, if it doesn't say new, does that mean it, it is already there or does it mean it's being added as a result of the conversation and based on the recommendation? I'm a little confused about the blue column versus the administrative recommendation column and what, what we're actually approving.
Sure, good question. The original content was primarily, but not exclusively taken from a resource called Teen Health, which was an addendum that we do not currently use, but is the addendum to our actual health resource we use at the middle level. And, um, we took for the most part that information from there. So that is all new information that is not included. But the idea is if neither group A nor group B called into question that information, that the administrative recommendation is to include that original content with the adjustments that are articulated in the final column.
So just, so that means that for those definition of terms, non-binary, transgender, et cetera, that there was consensus between group A and group B?
Um, for, yes, if they are not articulated differently, there's consensus on the definition with the understanding that group A would rather not have them in there at all. Um, because their position is not to include the information on gender identity. Now, there was some debate over, um, the concept of sexual orientation, which was different, originally reached a higher level of consensus for that than we did in gender identity. But some of those terms that are specific to sexual orientation were also called into question. But if they weren't, um, a lot of the work we did was actually on wordsmithing those definitions. So that a lot of work went into that, actually right up until the day of the presentation at the last meeting.
Mister President.
Yes.
I think it's a little misleading or I kind of had the same questions as Heather. So i- in the blue, it looks like people agree that that is the definition of whatever it is, but it doesn't mean they agree that they want it in the curriculum.
That is correct. Group B wants it in the curriculum. Group A would rather not have it if it's related to gender identity. Would rather not have it in the curriculum, but if it is, they would like us to follow those recommendations in that second column.
Right. And the it you're talking about is though specifically gender identity, gender dysphoria and biological sex. That was the only three.
Correct.
All of the other definitions you had consensus on.
Yes, with the understanding consensus on the definition, but not on its inclusion because group A's overall position is still that they would rather not have it in at all.
Mister President.
Okay.
And just to be clear, from the last meeting, the group A and group B both agreed on there's no disagreement on keeping sexual orientation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mister President.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's a little confusing. So the administrative recommendation is the only thing that you're recommending. You're not recommending the consensus.
No, we're recommending all of the consensus area with the administrative recommendation only clarifying those areas where there was specific disagreement. So the administrative recommendation is when those two sides were not matched, we put together administrative recommendation that we tried our best to, uh, blend the perspectives as best we could. I want to be completely clear, though, the administrative recommendation from our team is that we do include information on gender identity.
So, and am I remembering correctly that, um, group A would have preferred it isn't included at all? Group B prefer, thinks that it should be included and it should be at sixth grade. And so the administrative recommendation is yes, we're gonna include it and we will move it back a year to seventh grade.
That is accurate, yes.
Thank you.
Mister President.
Yes.
Well, I just want to say, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but the great work that you and your team did, the, the, uh, community representatives you brought together, I mean, starting with over fifty people and then ending with over twenty in like a year long process is just unbelievable. And that there was so much wordsmithing and work together as a team on, on complicated and, um, difficult issues for folks to get in a room and talk about. And I, I'm very supportive of the work you've done along the way and of the administrative recommendation here. I think, um, that you built consensus where consensus could be built and this is a, a, a plan that, um, respects parents' rights and also respects, um, the needs that people have for their children to learn about multiple identities. So thank you.
Yes, Jake.
Do we know what the other districts are doing as far as, um, defining these gender?
They're all over the board as, as we'd expect. Um, you know, when, when we talk about something that's controversial, doesn't mean that, um, that i- it's something that should not be explored, but what it does is it necessitates more dialogue. And, um, every community is a little bit different, the way they approach this, and, um, we've seen the full gamut from it will not be included to, um, something that is far more detailed and takes up more time in the curriculum.
And I know that we had talked, you and I met and we talked about gender dysphoria is a term that you took from the Mayo Clinic. And I just wondered, I, I mean, health to me is about science. And so I'm curious if they have definitions for the other newly recommended terms.
Sure. And I, so what Kate is referring to is that definition of, um, about gender dysphoria was started from a definition from the Mayo Clinic with, um, one slight modification where we took out reference to medical intervention. That was something that was part of the compromise process. And, um, although we have not searched for all definitions, I doubt Mayo would have definitions for things that aren't medically related. So if it's, um, if it is more of a social construct, I doubt they would actually have definitions around that. I, I don't know that for sure.
Good question.
Questions, yes, Molly.
Um, is the program, I, I didn't see in here, but I know we had talked about it before, opt in? So how, what does that look like?
Yep, that's a good question. So, um, as a district and as teaching learning department, we, um, we allow families to opt out of any learning experience that they feel doesn't match, um, their priorities of family or, um, or their values. It happens rarely, but it does happen from time to time, but that's an opt out, meaning it's up to the parent to reach out and say, hey, that's something that I'd rather not have my child experience. For this, we expect an opt in. So an opt in means that literally if they don't sign that permission slip, their child doesn't receive that instruction. And bef, and we're going to make sure that that process is very transparent. It's not something that's buried and with no information, like just a checkbox with no, we want to make sure that, that families have the information and that if they decide to allow their child to participate, they do it with, um, full, full awareness and consent of that process.
Mister President.
Yes.
And from the, from my understanding then, if a parent chooses the opt in, they could also choose to opt out from any specific lesson. So the one day in seventh grade and the one day in eighth grade on, um, gender identity and sexual orientation, they could say my kid's not going that day.
Yeah, thank you, Megan. Thank you for that clarification. I forgot to mention that. Yes, so you could opt in as a family to the entire experience, but then reach out to the school and say, but for these two lessons or these two experiences, I'd rather not have my child participate.
Good question. All right, thank you.
I have just one more question. So if a child say opts out and then another day, and this has been a concern that people have come to me with, that's why I bring it up. Another day, a kid says in class, can you explain gender creative again, or I think my friend is, can we talk about it? What would be the explanations to that?
Yeah, and Kate, you brought that up the other day and that got me thinking. And what we can do is we can guarantee, we can provide some parameters around this, that these topics, because they are sensitive, if a child brings it up outside of the time when that instruction was provided, that it would not be discussed in class. And that would be, we have those four bullet points of different ways we can respond when students ask questions. And that would be, we'll have to talk after class conversation and not discuss in front of everyone.
Any further questions? Otherwise entertain a motion.
Mister President, I would move to accept the recommendations of the committee with the, um, uh, including the ultimate administrative recommendations on the couple of areas where the committee did not come to consensus.
All right.
Second.
All right, and I'm sorry, who was that? Okay, it came from that direction. I didn't know if it was Megan or Molly. All right, got a second from Megan. Further discussion on this, we have the motion before the body, yes. Bob.
Yes, Mister President, um, because of the work of the committee and, um, and administration on this is uh, what we want to see, uh, is community engagement and the, with the opt in, um, policies and, and safety measures. I am, I am in support of this.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion, which is to accept the administration recommendations where there, um, where there is needed recommendation, otherwise there was consensus from the committee and accept, uh, the work of the committee. Uh, all those, uh, in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, the motion passes. Next up, approval of architectural contract.
Yep, uh, you have in the, uh, board pack, and I sent this to you about a week or two ago. Uh, the contract with Bray Architects for architectural services related to the referendum projects. Uh, we've been working with Bray Architects here for the last, uh, few weeks, month or so. Actually, we started our work with them about twelve months ago as it, uh, relates to, uh, architectural services and, and redoing some of our, um, couple of our elementaries and, and the middle school. And so the recommendation, as you saw, we went, we entered into this agreement or we've entered into conversations about this agreement, had it reviewed by our attorney, school attorney. Um, and I had sent you an email that forwarded her response, which was, Nick, uh, I'd recommend, I would concur, recommend the board going, entering into this agreement as presented. So, uh, I would open up for any questions people have.
Mister President?
Yes.
So Nick, when you and I talked and I, I sent, you know, my list of, uh, just general questions. And it really started with, when you and I talked, you said, um, in the contract, in section three, it talks about all the varying scopes of work that are included, aren't, are excluded.
Yep.
And you had said interior design, you know, was included.
Yep.
Um, but in the, in three, one, it's, it, it didn't, it didn't appear to be included. Likewise, building envelope. And then because of the specificity with, um, you know, some of the security and some of the other stuff, I just want to confirm that the, uh, building automation stuff, the direct digital control, that's also included, is scope.
Yep, that's also included. Uh, interior design is included in four point one point one point one one of the contract, uh, is a basic architectural service. Um, and then also the building envelope, because the scope of the project involves windows, uh, exterior doors, um, roofing and things along those lines, that is included in the project. Uh, as far as specific, uh, specificity to the security system design, um, we do not, um.
That was just an example.
Yep, yep, nope, absolutely. Uh, I will say the controls are included, uh, in the design and that process related to HVAC. Um, so yes, those are all included. We made sure that I was reading it the same way the architect was reading it, which was the same way the attorney was reading it. Uh, so that's, uh, how I answered those questions.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then just, because I think we did this, if I remember correctly, with the high school, as design drawings and then as construction?
Yep, we will get as design drawings. Uh, so once, uh, we're all said and done, we've gone out to bid, we've made any adjustments to move forward with the construction process. So if there was any changes or modifications that are made uh, related to, you know, suggestions that contractors give us, uh, things along those lines, we'll have a set of as design drawings. That'll be kind of a moment in time at that point. Uh, and then, uh, we'll get those electronically. And then we will also get, uh, at the end of the project, what's called the as built or the as constructed. Uh, that is something that the construction managers required to provide is their, part of their contract uh, with all the annotation or anything that have changed that differ from the as design plan so that we have what's actually been built. So those will be part of the process. Yep.
Okay.
Exactly like we did at the high school project.
So then if there are charges, then the district will pay them, the construction manager would pay the architect for any of those updates?
Yep, if there's any updates that the construction manager is not able to do, uh, within their own software and as they, as they send those things through. But the way we got our as built designs, uh, at the high school project, that they were annotated PDFs and things like that. So they're able to do them right on the actual drawings. There wasn't a need for the, um, architects then to do that for the construction manager. Now, we will still have all the change order pieces and stuff like that. Those will all be added in there, but yep, that'll all be part of the process. And that's part of the construction management services.
Okay.
Yep.
And then likely, we're gonna hire a commissioning agent, I would assume.
That is correct. Yep, so we are planning on commissioning, uh, in the, um, in the drawing or in the contract, uh, section three point one point two, it does spell out that the architect's responsible for coordinating with our consultants, uh, outside third party consultants. Because the commissioning agent is really truly a third party consultant for us, they wouldn't necessarily be directing their work, but they would be coordinating their efforts. Uh, there'll be some conversations that we'll have between, you know, Dustin and, uh, Bonnie and myself, the architect about when would be the appropriate time to get them involved in the process. It could happen anywhere from the design development phase all the way through. Uh, or it could be towards, uh, the end as more of a, um, uh, end, end system type of check on things. But, um, we are planning on having those conversations and the pros and cons and also talking with the construction manager about that process, getting their feedback on it and then making that determination.
Okay.
Yep.
Because four, four, one, one, twenty one?
Mm-hmm.
And it talks about, uh, architect coordination with owners consultants and that's excluded?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, just as long as we've got our, we're covered, that's all I care about.
And, and really felt, and both the attorney felt that three point one point two would supersede all that because they're required to work with any third parties that we hire directly, um, and that, and to coordinate that. However, they, uh, they would not be directing the work of the commissioning agents. Because that would kind of create somewhat of a conflict of interest if you're gonna have a third party commission agent directed by somebody that's designing the facility.
But if they need to have the mechanical engineer change a sequence of operations, something like that, then that coordination's gonna happen.
That can all happen. Yep.
Okay, that's perfect. Um, and then six, six, it talks about if, for some reason, when they, the construction manager completes their budget work, um, and ultimately the design exceeds what budgets are. Six, six talks about, well, the architect will make those changes without charge to the district.
Correct.
But then six, seven immediately after says, well, they'll make the changes note in six, six, but then it's an additional service. So I just, I mean, I want to make sure that we're not paying Yep. for that additional.
Yep, so, um, they don't conflict because basically what those two paragraphs mean is we worked with and talked with the attorney on it is, is if the district decides to spend additional money beyond the guaranteed maximum price, the architect will get their percentage fee on that additional, on that additional money. So, for example, if all of a sudden we decided to add another million dollars to the projects or things like that, that's where the additional cost would come in. Um, and as we work that, the other, the other piece would come is if we get all the way to the point where we're at like seventy five percent construction drawings and the CM has not at any point along the way, which they're the ones that are gonna be responsible for the budgeting the majority of the way, said, oh, no, everything's great. And then all of a sudden, things are coming in ten, twelve million dollars of budget, twenty five percent, and there's a tremendous amount of design work. We'll be working with the CM, that'll be part of their contract. They'll have to reimburse the architect for design work that they should have caught on the, on the front end of the project.
Okay. And actually, I think what I was talking about was even prior to either at bid or just prior to bid. And so if the construction manager goes through and they, they pull together budgets based on whatever the design work was done. And it turns out the architect designed more than what the budget is. You know, according to six, six, you know, the architect would have to go back then and change their design without charging us.
Correct.
And six, seven is, seems to sort of fly in the, is, it seems to be the opposite. And again, maybe I'm.
And the way that the attorney read it to us is if we continue to increase the scope from beyond the original...
If we do.
Yep, that's where we would pay additional money.
If they have to reduce, then we don't pay?
If they have to reduce things down...
Based on the original?
Based on the original scope, yes, then we wouldn't pay. But if they have to reduce, because the CM all along the way, oh yeah, that's great, that's looking good, that's, you know, and now we get all the way to construction document phase, which is the fully engineered drawings, and now all of a sudden, things are coming, you know, bids are coming back way over, then that's a conversation that'll be part of our CM contract that works in conjunction with our architecture contact, contract, because there's an expectation that they are keeping track of those things to not allow the project to continue to move forward in the design phase if they're seeing red flags like, hey, you're designing something that's going to be way over budget.
Yep.
And so that's where then the CM is going to carry some of that liability to have to potentially reimburse the architect if there's a tremendous amount of redesign work related to something, they said, nope, this is perfect, this is great, we're going great, and then all of a sudden, the rug comes out from underneath us.
Okay, and that'll be in their documents?
That'll be in their documents. Yep, they work together. Yep.
And then, I know we've probably beat this to death, I mean, just based on our conversation, you know, three-five-four talks about quality control. And I know that we've had lots of conversations on this, but in the contract, the only sentence that talks about quality control is, the architect shall meet with the construction manager to review the construction documents. So what, and we'll talk about this later, because I, you know, I know there's a lot of really good things that are going to happen. What are those things that Bray is, or any architect that's going to work with us, frankly? You know, what does that quality control process look like? Because we just want it to be different than last time.
Well, and I think that, you know, the big piece is, and it wasn't necessarily that our quality was not good last time. I mean, there's challenges, and it was a very complex project. You know, a big piece of talking with Bray, you know, they're doing now the 3D modeling, the 3D walkthroughs. So all the engineers will have that, more time on site for the engineers ahead of time, those different components. And then addition to that, I mean, it is the architect's professional reputation online, obviously the quality, and then working with the CM through this process, more ongoing meetings, and then making sure that the project team, not just representatives from the construction management firm, are actually involved in those pre-designed meetings and making sure that the people that are actually going to have to carry this thing out are on the front end, not just representatives from the construction management firm.
Okay, and have they talked about that page turn process at all?
We haven't talked, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but I mean, we did a pretty extensive page turn process when it talked about the scope in each classroom and each piece of the building. You know, it wasn't necessarily that things were left out or that we didn't have the scope right, but there were things that definitely were changed in the last one, either unforeseen conditions or things, yep, that were missed as we worked through, as we worked through some of those things. So I would anticipate that both the elementaries and the middle school will go through a full page turn process. Both, they'll do it with the architects, engineers, and the CM, and include school district staff in that process.
That's, that's perfect.
Yep.
Last thing, didn't you say that Bray, if we were to move forward with them tonight in this contract part, that ultimately they would forgive the master planning, this eighteen-five and the referendum support? Wouldn't they going to forgive those dollars? And granted, it's small in the grand scheme of things, but...
It's outlined in the, I believe it's outlined in the contract, it's in parentheses as credits?
I'm just looking at eleven-one-one.
Under cost of work, let me pull it up.
We don't have to spend time on it, Nick. If it's there as a credit, I believe you.
Yeah, I mean, it should be there as a credit. And I mean, I can go and find the exact...
If it's there, I believe you. That's all I've got.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Bray moving forward in construction.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Right, there's a motion second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. The motion is approved, the contract is approved. Next up is the first reading of teaching and learning policies, part seven. This is for Dave.
Mostly me.
Yeah, this is for Tara.
If you remember right, you saw those last meeting, even though it says teaching and learning, a majority of those technically fall under student services. Nothing very alarming. A lot of it was outdated policies, some surprising policies that we didn't have that were recommended, we needed to add in there, some policies that we got rid of, and I know there were some comments about, this seems like it's important. It is important, it's just in other places, so it's not that we're getting rid of it. So this is the first official reading of those.
Mr. President?
Yes, Heather?
I move to approve the first reading of these teaching and learning policies, part seven.
And which includes the recommended deletion of several of the policies that were previously...
Correct, the proposed deletions, modifications, and new policies as presented.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
That's very close, it's like simultaneous, I'm going to give it to Molly. All right. So it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, which is the first reading of part seven of teaching and learning policies and including all the deletions and modifications, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. All right. Yeah, that's right. How many years has it been since we started part one? Two years, yeah. Okay. Well, hopefully our next five-year cycle.
We'll start in his review next year on his policies.
All right, so that is passed. We got a vote on that, so now, next up, the elementary student handbook.
Yep, Sue did such a good job on all the other seventeen presentations, so she's going to talk about the elementary handbook, and just, we've got some slight changes that she'll talk through.
So Kim, Kim Osterhues and I work, look through, kind of go through it each year and just look at anything that needs updating or changes or changed. And actually, there were very few things this year, with the exception of a few updates from teaching and learning with some of the curricular changes that we are adding, for example, the kindergarten K-two phonics program. So otherwise, we've had school age care, transportation, health services, every kind of, everybody looks through their section and very few changes, just with teaching and learning.
And we did get those changed, Megan, the...
And so folks, if they read, you know, reading the packet, the handbook actually goes through, and it's nicely color-coded there with red with the deletions and changes are all in red.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan?
I think the book looks great. I find the expected behaviors on the bus a useful resource to use at home, so thank you for that.
But again, my brief review of that, it looks like there's some grammatical things, but not major policy shifting or anything like that.
Correct.
All right, is there a motion then to approve the recommended changes?
Motion to approve with the recommended changes to the elementary school handbook.
All right, motion by Molly, second by Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next up is food service management company. It's Bonnie.
Yeah, so just an update from our last meeting, we had an interview with our two finalists. We had directors, principals, our food service director, had an interview process of our two finalists. It was a great day, and I think other principals wanted to sign off after they got to have the taste of all the great food that was there that day. So we did do that, we submitted our recommendation to DPI, they have approved it, pending your approval to go with Chartwell's. You know, I've been asked a lot of times of why we're doing this. I mean, one I think is big is extending the offerings for our kids at all grade levels. I think the other is just providing the support to our food service director. It was pretty amazing, you know, going through the interviews, they brought teams of like twelve people that would be able to support dieticians and HR support. Chefs, executive chefs would have resources to meet with. I mean, it was just like, and I was looking at Nicole, like, you're expected to do all that with no support. You call me, and I'm like, well, I don't know, I can try to help, and we tried to get... So I think it's really exciting to see where the program's going to go. The recommendation that everybody came up with was Chartwell's. Tim Leary is here, he's the regional director, is that right? Something like that. He did, and he's here to answer any questions. Our thought was to, if it is approved, to have them at next month. I didn't want to be presumptuous if it wasn't approved, to provide a presentation to the board of what it would look like, their catering menus and things like that. So I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, you did my job really well. We're really excited about this.
If you could come up to the microphone.
We're very excited about this, about the opportunity in Hudson. I've been around the community for a number of years, and, you know, this is, I think I started talking to Tim Erickson, you know, six or seven years ago, so it's been in the works for a long time, in essence, from a, you know, big picture standpoint. Bonnie really understands what we do as a food service management company, and her expectations are totally in line with what our capabilities are, and we're just going to overachieve every day. We view this, you know, you're going to approve a one-year contract with up to four renewals. We see it as a day-to-day contract, so, and we're going to put an end to Jimmy John's at the board meetings.
Well, I was going to say, when you make this presentation, you better bring samples.
Mr. President?
I don't have a bag of treats, I am the food guy, and I didn't bring any food, so...
I'd have a question. Are you a little concerned after seeing how the board goes after the contracts? I'm just saying, pretty specific, and I may have to recuse myself because of all the free samples I took at the convention down in Milwaukee. My only request is no quinoa, please.
I like the quinoa.
All right, we're going to start a big debate here, but no, I think, yeah, the samples that I got at the convention, yeah, were definitely worthwhile and helped, you know, make my decision here, so, yes.
Mike, I'm not sure who can answer it, but what happens to our staff that are currently working in the cafeteria? Would they continue on with this company or with us, or how does that work?
Sure, sure, so part of the bid process, there was a requirement that all of our staff would remain, our employees. I think it's really important to honor their years of service on the WRS, we don't want to pull that from them. So as long as they decide to stay with the Hudson School District, they will always be our employees. If they choose to go to Chartwell's, because there are some different benefits through that, they just can't come back. Like, it's a one-and-done position, but as long as they are our employee now, they will remain. All new hires would be Chartwell employees.
And a couple of things we did behind the scenes on that too, is that the employees are all pre-approved, if they do come to us, that they will have benefits immediately on day one. Their prior service will be credited forward, so in our eyes, you know, someone who's here twenty years, they'll be viewed as a twenty-year employee. Everybody gets a raise in that respect. And from a benefit standpoint, you may not be familiar with who we are, we're the biggest company you never heard of, which Bonnie's probably heard that nineteen times from you, but every time you see somebody, you know, making food on TV or away from home, that might be us, and we're the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in our industry, so it probably is us.
Mr. President? Rob?
And so just two things. So the director of nutrition then would be part of their organization, is that right?
Yep, so two positions, the director will be a Chartwell's employee, and so will the executive chef. Our current executive chef did resign prior to us going out to bid, so that's kind of a nice transition. And then Nicole will start having those conversations, and we've already had those conversations a little bit.
Okay, and what's the term of the agreement?
So it's a, it's a one-year contract with up to four renewals, and then we would have to rebid the process. But after one year, we could say this isn't for us and go back, but that's not going to happen.
That's right.
Because we're going to push it to make it incredible.
There'll be so many things offered that you won't even notice the quinoa.
Bonnie, would you be able to share a little bit about changes at the high school and the menus options? So kind of the physical changes at the high school and then the menus for all the areas? Whoever wants to answer the question would be awesome.
Yeah, I can kind of just tell you my experience. So we went to River Falls, River Falls does have Chartwell's because we wanted to see it in person in action. It was really impressive, and we talked to the kids, we're like, do you like the food? And they had, they had grab-and-go sandwiches, like hamburgers, chicken sandwiches, there was kind of that. They had a bar, so that day was a potato bar, and you could have like fresh broccoli. And they had a grant that they had written for asparagus, so they had roasted asparagus. What else did they have? They had, yeah, I mean, it was pretty impressive, but you can say, I think our high school would probably be a step above that because of our...
The facilities you have at the high, I used the word gobsmacked the day we were there. And, you know, it's a shame that there's not enough labor right now to use the elements and, I keep saying ground round, my common ground. So my family owned ground rounds a million years ago.
Okay.
But we will have those facilities open and fully staffed. We envision the elements piece as a partnership with culinary and business classes here, as well as the common ground. And, you know, I forget how many offerings there were right now, but our typical, you know, high school is about twenty different choices a day, and the idea is to get kids through a queue just as quickly as possible. Because if they start standing, you know, you start losing people when there's lines. So we are the experts in managing queues, you know, for anything from a high school to, you know, we run the Oscars, so it's...
Well, doesn't more options help those queues?
Yes, it does, and we also spread them out too. So there is actual science to moving people around and where you put, you know, like a taco bar, where you put pizza, you know, where chicken is and things like that. But we are a scratch cooking organization too. So this isn't about us, you know, filling up the freezer. There'd be a chef on site, and we're going to train people up and raise the bar on, you know, what can be done for a more sophisticated menu. Bonnie referred to River Falls, we've been there for forty years. We can do a very sophisticated menu there when we need to, and the catering events that we do there are really first-rate. So in moving forward, anytime you guys think of foods, we want you to think of us. I'm joking about Jimmy John's, but not really. You know, every meeting, every interaction, every booster club, all that purchasing benefits the school district. And, you know, that's our secret sauce. We have an entity within our parent company that purchased a hundred and forty billion dollars of food last year, more than any organization in the world. And we're a twenty-three-billion-dollar company, so obviously, we're vying for third parties. So, but with that kind of buying power, why not leverage that, you know, to help the district?
I am curious, how are we going to advertise this and get spur some, you know? Because it could take a while if it doesn't have a big splash as far as marketing, so to speak, and promotion, you know?
Yep, so in the letter I wrote to the board, there is a transition program. I think a lot of the back-to-school, we're really going to have like tables or, you know, experiences for the kids. So we have big plans to splash this all over the place.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I think, I know the high school stuff is very exciting, and it sounds like I want to go there for lunch, but as a parent of a grade schooler, I'm really excited about the changes that we're going to see at the elementary level too, that there's going to be better breakfast options. My kid lives, we live way out at the edge of St. Joe, so she's on the bus for an hour, so she wants to eat breakfast when she gets to school, second breakfast. And having another hot entree in the grade school as well, so it's, I think, just important to remember how much it's going to help middle school, grade school, and the high school all along the way.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Rob?
And so, and I didn't have a chance to go through all three hundred and twenty pages.
What?
Do you guys have a program or some kind of attention to food waste?
Yes. Matter of fact... Matter of fact, sustainability was a buzzword in our world long before you ever saw it in the media or anything. Because what we do is very resource-intensive, and we know that right from the start. One of the things, you know, we don't really even talk about this, but we'll survey all the schools, and we look at it from a carbon footprint and look for ways within the operation, even before we, you know, cut our first onion, to, you know, save things for the environment. Then we've got three programs, and I'm not, I'm the sales guy, I don't get my hands dirty very often, so. But three internal programs that the motto is, "The wastebasket in the back of the house is just as important as the one in the front." So, we are constantly looking at, you know, what sort of waste measurement there is. And there's, you know, we're in the Adina Schools, and we have a program there where we're weighing it in a couple elementary schools, and it's going to compost. And we'll look for a partnership like that. Is there any farms around here? Somebody always wants that stuff, which is, you just have to ask. And, you know, we love to do things like that, because sustainability is a huge part of what we do.
Great, Mr. President.
Yes, I hope we look into the composting and also, we have numerous food rescue operations in the area, too. But really looking forward to a big splash rollout for this, because I think that's a huge opportunity. Long overdue. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion then to approve?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Rob, second by Bob. Everyone's gotta be right on that, you gotta have more coffee, I guess. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the motion passes. Next up, insurance coverage with recommendations. Assuming Bonnie, this is you?
We're no longer gonna offer health insurance, is that what you said, Bonnie? No. I mean, yeah, we have, we have to pay for the food service, so.
Tim, can you go to the other, with the recommendation link? It's the next--
Not that document.
It was the other attachment on the--
Is the blue and the red comparing the two years?
Yep. So, I think I had alluded earlier, we were, we received a drop notice from CM Regent from our property insurance. We had a $12 million claim, so imagine that happened. So, we've been looking for another, another company to provide us services. We sent the bid out, I believe it was 10. We were rejected from 7. And then we had three that we, well, one of them's still thinking about it. And we said, "Well, we need to make a decision." So, this is the one that we are proposing for tonight. It's not ideal, but this is where we're at. So, Liberty Mutual proposed, it's kind of scary, because if you look at the premium, last year was $164,000. Their proposal is $271,000. But if you go two lines down, there's a very big difference of blanket building and contents. So, CM Regent had not updated our value of our properties. And if you look at what Liberty Mutual is, it's almost $100 million more. So, although the premium is higher, I think it was probably due of whoever got us that it was gonna go up just because we needed to update that. The, our current deductible is $10,000 per current. The lowest we get from the other person was 75, and this one was 50. So, that was pretty comparable, not that big of a difference. This is our big, the next line, the word says wind and hail. So--
We went from no deductible to?
Well, it was, it was $10,000 last year. I think it was $10,000, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, it was $10,000.
I don't know what it says any. So, both of the two proposals that we did receive had a percentage. So, basically, if it's a hail or wind, one proposal was 2%, one was 3%. But the other one had a higher premium rate. So, we are recommending this one. And, I mean, based on our loss history, last, last year was an anomaly. I mean, I don't, I don't think we should base our whole decision, because I'm hoping we don't get hail and wind. But if you look at our past experience over the last 10 years, that those were the only claims we've had. There was really, there was an $80,000 claim, I think, about three years ago. Then there was the scoreboard, and then the big one. So, so that's kind of our, our negative with this proposal. Again, we didn't have a lot to choose from. We weren't, people were lining up to give us insurance. So, that would be our recommendation for property insurance. If you do go down, we did have a glimmer of hope with our workers' comp insurance. So, because our mod factor, we were at .99. It's down to .84, because we had some claims fall off our record. We saved almost $100,000 in that premium. So, net, we're about $60,000 more than last year. So, in the big picture, it's not as bad as it is, but the same coverage of workers' comp, there wouldn't be any changes, other than our mod factor improved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
What does a mod, what is a mod factor?
Sure.
Does the dividend mean for--
Yep, yep. So, a mod factor, basically, they look at your claims for the past three years, and it's like a state calculation. Whatever, the lower your mod factor, the better it is, because it means that you have less claims. The dividend is basically, companies will kind of buy your business and say, not buy your business, but give you like a rebate. So, last year, they said, "40% of your premium, we're gonna get back to you as, as our proposal." That was reduced this year to 30%, but it's also on a lower premium, so that'll be a little bit less as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Rob. So, the wind-hail deductible, does that say 3% plus $250,000 minimum?
So, it's, it's $250,000 minimum, or if it's over $250,000, it's 3%.
Oh, it's, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So, basically, your deductible for wind and hail is $250,000.
But, I mean, so if you have $300,000 of the damage, we're paying the first--
250.
250.
And then after that, you're paying 3%.
I think, you know, with our insurance, we've had the same carrier for a while, and I think we had somewhat of a policy that has been really good. It hadn't been really adjusted in a long time. And a lot of these property casualty insurance companies are really reevaluating their level of exposure, especially on really big insurers or insur-ees like us. So, we would anticipate we wouldn't hit that, but as, as Bonnie said, the other one didn't have that same height of deductible on rain and, rain and hail, or wind and hail. However, their premium was about $50,000 higher, I think, $60,000 years. So, if we go four, five, six years without a wind hail claim, we'll then eventually be money ahead. We haven't had a wind hail claim in tenders.
Yeah, this was the only one you've had.
This is the only one we've had. And so, if we have another big claim like this, where it's $15 million, something like that, I mean, it's, that's a drop in the bucket then, at that point, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And so that, are we doing anything or changing anything where we keep something in the fund balance for that? Or is our fund balance good?
Yeah, we talked about that today. It does need some fund balance, to kind of almost do some reinsurance with ourselves within fund balance. Kind of set aside maybe that difference every year and start to build that up as, as we, as we work through it.
Yeah, we also, one of the vendors, which he didn't have time to explore, but they do have reinsurance for hail damage. So, I don't know how much it would cost, but I mean, I think that's something we could definitely, you know, if it's not crazy expensive, maybe that's something we add to our policy. But we also talked about the savings of premium this year to designate that as a help with future deductibles.
Right. I'm sure we could have insisted on a 2% deductible, but we would have paid a lot more for the premium.
No, they were pretty much just, there wasn't a lot of negotiating. It was very strange. I've never--
You just can't take it or leave it.
Yeah.
They knew we were in a tough spot.
Yeah.
We lose coverage till I won.
And they basically told us the last week in April. So, to turn around and try to get bids and get claim history and go through their underwriters, and this was the only meeting we had, it was a tight turnaround.
So, could we table this for further discussion?
And give Bonnie a heart attack?
No insurance. I will not be sleeping, but sure, that'd be great.
Let's not go without, let's not go without insurance.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the motion passes with the recommendation for our new property insurer. And work comp is basically renewed with the same company, so. All right, next up is the budget preview, which is also Bonnie.
Some are super great, exciting. So, on Friday, I think, I'm hoping people were emailed. I did attach a legislative summary from the School Administrators Alliance. There seems to be a compromise between the Legislature and the Governor on next year's budget. They are, right now, it's a $325 per pupil increase in the revenue limit, an increase in low revenue ceiling from $10,000 to $11,000, which for us, we're at about $12,000, so that won't affect us. They're gonna be reinvesting $30 million in a school-based mental health program. And then there's $50 million slated toward reading initiative that's in development. So, that, it's just attached here. So, what does that mean for us? So, if we look, so the two things that we had talked about earlier was the revenue limit increase and the state or special education aid. The revenue limit increase, so $325 per pupil, they only increased special education aid to 33.3%. So, when they were shooting for 60%, that really was not much for us. So, for next year, if we just look at the revenue limit, don't include any reduction of staff due to enrollment or other revenue sources, we estimate about a $2 million deficit for next year. And then if you project that out, the first example is, has steady enrollment, actually 5,000, 5,050 students, and then the one below has a reducing by about 30 students a year. Enrollment's the driver of the revenue limit, so that's just kind of our best guess at this point.
So, we didn't get near what we were hoping to get. You know, we built models around, you know, 350, 650. We built models around 45%, 60% special ed aid. It, the thing that's probably the most disappointing about this year's budget compromise, both from the Legislature and the Governor's office, is the voucher reimbursement is gonna go from $9,000 to $12,000. So, they're gonna go up $3,000 per kid right away, year one. But public school kids are gonna go up $325 in the first year and $325 in the second year. It is, you know, it's pretty disappointing, especially as we continue to know that people are struggling with operational referendums, and we didn't pass ours. We have, as Bonnie alluded to, we do have some additional one-time monies coming in, kind of the balance of our ESSR money that'll help offset some of this for next year. And we've already identified about 700, a little over $700,000 in staff reductions going into next year, almost all through attrition, I think. Is that right, Andrew? So, you know, netting it out will probably finish in the positive, you know, as far as we won't be negative or a deficit. But we only have so many of those things up our sleeves before we're gonna eventually run into some problems. You know, we'll, we'll probably be reasonably okay through this biennium, through continued expenditure reductions and things like that. But we start getting into that 25, 26 school year, facing a $7 million deficit is gonna be really hard to overcome without some additional operating revenue as we, as we look at this. And so, like I said, pretty disappointing, because when you think about it, we had 0% increase the last two years from Legislature. And then moving forward, you know, we picked up about, if you think about the next two years, we picked up a roughly $650, which would be about 5% over two years. But that's really 5% over four years, because we didn't get anything the last two years. So, when inflation's at, been at 5, 6, 7, 8%, we've been averaging over the last, if you think about it, over the last four years, a little over 1% in increased revenue that way. So, we can continue to cut, and we continue to make those adjustments, but we still have to pay people, and we still have to be competitive and things along those lines. And so, it's gonna continue to be a challenge for us.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, are you projecting that the revenue limit will keep going up by $325 in future, future years? Because I'm worried that, that could be optimistic. I hope it's pessimistic, but if that's opti, you know what I'm saying?
We can definitely run models to have other scenarios. We did just project it to go all 325.
We did drop the salary, wage increases down to 3% in those years and then. But I think, you know, typically, I mean, we've gotten around 200 bucks on average, 200-plus. Plus, we've gotten, you know, the last biennium budget prior to the, the freeze, we did get some special ed aid, and we did get some other aids and things like that. It's just, essentially, this biennium budget needed to take care of four years' worth of, of revenue. And unfortunately, it just didn't, it just didn't do it.
Didn't catch us up.
It didn't, it didn't quite catch us up. You know, I, I think it's, it's, it's gonna continue to be a real, a real challenge for us. We're in a phenomenal position, because even after we do the designated fund balance for facilities, we still have about a $9 million buffer between what our undesigned fund balance is and our targeted undesigned, unreserved fund balance. So, that's why I said I think we'll be all right the next couple of years, as far as from a standpoint of it, the sky isn't falling. We talked about that during the referendum. But these numbers are start, they start to get exponentially larger. And, you know, I asked Bonnie, what was the big jump from $2 million to $5 million deficit? A lot of that has to do with the declining enrollment adjustment drops off. So, we get kind of a three-year declining enrollment adjustment to kind of ease your pain as you've had, as we've all had, or as we've had declining enrollment. Well, essentially, what we're really gonna be feeling that year is that big drop of about 250 kids we had during COVID. Now, all of a sudden, we're gonna feel the full impact of that in the 24, 25 budget year.
Mr. President?
Yes.
No, I lost it. Forget it.
Well, we're just talking about these projections. Right now, these are projections, and we got basically 90 days to put together a budget for the annual meeting and start honing things, right?
Yep, so we are starting to work with HR. We have negotiations this week. So, once we get those big things taken care of, we can start plugging that in and get better numbers for you.
Okay. Now, you do have another part of your report, and that was the fund balance designations, and you're looking for action tonight with a motion?
Correct.
Correct.
And why don't you lay out what the recommendation of the administration is and--
Sure. I can't read that. I'm too old.
Can we increase the size of that?
That's all right. Got it right here. So, these were, we talked about these at the work session last time. But the first designation would be the additional $5 million that we had talked about last summer to designate for capital projects as part of the, to complete the referendum project. So, that would add $5 million for that. An additional $500,000 for our self-funded health fund balance. I think it's just updating it in accordance with our increased claims that we've been, we've been seeing. Are non-spendable and restricted, so that's basically things that we will have due when we close our book. So, there'll be bills coming that we have not received yet. Our back-to-school supplemental aid, that was, we received last, was it September, October? I think we just haven't come up with a plan of how we're gonna designate that use. So, we need to designate that, because we need to have a reason of what we used it for. And then the unassigned fund balance we're anticipating would increase about $490,000.
So, be looking for a motion to sign an additional $5 million of fund balance to capital projects?
Yep.
And do we have to do a motion for the $500,000 on the self-funded, or has that already been made?
Nope, we would need for the whole sheet.
Okay.
For all of them.
So, you could say as presented?
Yes.
So, we could do just one versus individually?
Yep, you could just say as presented.
So moved, as presented?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Rob, second by Bob. And any further questions on that? Otherwise, the figure that we see there, the unassigned fund balance after we move those numbers over will be--
$28,900,000.
Yeah, almost $29 million. So, still more than what it is now. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the fund balance designations are approved. Now, next up, support staff wage schedule. I assume we're looking for a motion here as well?
Just a motion to approve. I think Andrew already presented to you the support staff wage increase. This is just the final schedule. It's to implement what you-- It's to implement what you guys approved at the, was it the last meeting, Andrea? Is that right?
Yep, at the work session, we discussed it.
These include the adjustments that were identified in the, in the work session and then the increases with the 5%. Is that right?
The 5% and then additional targeted increases for some administrative assistant positions, caregivers, lead caregivers and custodians specifically based on the median data from our comparables.
And the way this, I mean, I can see that there's a big difference between step one and step three, which is important because, um, you know, of all the expensive retraining folks, we want experienced people that know what they're doing. But, um, what's the 1%, 2% in each category?
That goes along with our support staff compensation system was, which is our performance based system where it's not a component impact, but it's essentially the base of the step one, step two, step three, and just adding 1%, 2% depending upon their evaluation.
Got it. Trying to reward performance.
Exactly. Yep. And so we have that in here as well. Uh, one other note, um, is the elimination of the, we're combining two positions, the Coda and the PTA position. So our occupational therapist assistant, as well as our physical therapy assistant, our comparable data showed that the combination of the positions was warranted. Uh, there's been a lot of conversation about, um, where those positions should fall. And what our data showed is that we were substantially over our median, um, in terms of those rates of pay. And so, uh, we combined it and put it at the lower level, which is, which was the Coda position. However, it's still, um, the median right now is 2682 and current 22, 23 rate of pay at the top end was 3489 in Hudson. So we're substantially over the median. And so with all of that and working collaboratively with student services, the decision was made to combine those positions into one and red circle essentially our existing staff, um, at the higher rate of pay, but then eliminate that going forward.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And then red circle means just to keep the people who were overpaid at that level?
To keep the higher rate of pay for those, um, yeah, the individuals currently placed at that level, they would still get the 5%. So it's not like we're going to freeze them. However, that classification going forward for new hires is going to be placed at, um, the Coda slash PTA one rate of pay, which is again, consistent with our comps.
So Andrea, what is the minimum, um, percentage raise?
5%.
5% is the minimum across the board?
Is the minimum, yes. And then it was a little bit more for some of those targeted positions, but we went substantially less than the 1% that we'd asked for with the board, uh, at the work session.
When you're saying median, what, what, just all?
A median amongst our comparable districts. Yep, and that's defined in the handbook and also determined by the board. Um, we did do a more robust analysis this spring where we looked at, um, that data quite closely. And those were the targeted positions, um, that I listed as the ones needing some 11 cent increases just to meet, to meet the median. Others were more substantial and, uh, looking at it holistically, um, looking within our position classifications, we came to a recommendation collaboratively with financial services about what we can afford. But also an important note is, um, those adjustments occurred before we did the 5% so that it wouldn't put us behind the eight ball too going forward.
So after we, you know, tentatively approved this tonight, I mean, we would, would be approving it, but, um, assuming that happens, then you've got, what, uh, 60 days to do massive recruiting and filling these positions?
We sure are going to be working on it. July is when we're going to be posting our support staff positions, usually mid-July. A wrinkle with support staff, it's hard to recruit now for positions that start in end of August, beginning September. People usually need jobs earlier than that, um, in these type of roles. And so we look at it differently depending upon the position, but yeah, definitely a recruitment efforts start towards the end of July.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or do we have a motion to approve, um, the specific pay scales mentioned as recommended by administration?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Molly, second by Kate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next up, we have last on the action, uh, items of our regular meeting is the student transportation contract, which was discussed in depth. It's a work session, so this is Bonnie.
I just recommendation to approve as presented?
Correct. Unless you have questions.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and it's approved. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. All right. Motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.